Ready to go, Jay?
Yes, we are, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, good evening, everyone. This is the Town of South Kingstown Planning Board. This is a regular meeting. The date is Tuesday, January 26th in 2021. The time is 7:00 PM. First item on the agenda is roll call. Pam, will you take the role, please?
Very good. Steve Demasi.
Yeah.
Joe Murphy.
Here.
Paul Jordan.
Here.
Peter Di Stefano.
Here.
Susan Axelrod.
Here.
And Pam Rubenoff here. And then we have our staff.
Maria Mack, I'm here.
Oh, gosh, Maria. Thank you. Um, then our staff, we have Jamie Rabbit.
Present.
Jay Parker.
Here.
Brian. Brian.
Here.
Ryan Wagner.
Wagner, yes, here.
Okay, I better write these down for tonight. Rich Bourbonay.
I'm here.
And our special legal counsel, Amy Goines.
Here.
Hey, very good. First item on the agenda is consent agenda. We have the approval of minutes for December 1st, 2020, the special session. December 8th, 2020, special session, and December 22nd, 2020, regular session. Do I hear a motion for approval of the minutes?
Move approval of consent agenda.
I have a motion from Maria. Do we have a second? The second from Pam. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise their hand. All right, motion is unanimous. Okay, first item on subdivisions in land development projects. This is a major subdivision extension of final plan approval for the woods at Stone Soup. Do we have someone representing Stone Soup?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Kenyon is coming in. There he is.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. John Kenyon, attorney for the applicant, Sand Dollar LLC. We're here tonight requesting the reinstatement of the final plan approval for Phase 3 of the woods at Stone Soup Farm. The original final approval was granted on August 29th, 2018, for a seven lot flexible design residential project. It was reinstated previously on October 25th, 2019. The property is located on Wood Soup Way. It's 33.91 acres in size, and it's in a R80 zoning district. Um, the applicant has been working on, um, completing the, uh, the infrastructure and everything that was needed to record this. He thought he was going to be done in November, um, but there was some additional, uh, work that needed to be completed, and he missed the, uh, the deadline. So we're here looking for reinstatement. The zoning ordinance has not changed since the final approval. The, uh, regulations haven't changed. The physical characteristic of the property hasn't changed, and the state approvals haven't changed. Jay Gilbert is here tonight, in case the board has any questions.
Okay. Were there any questions from board members? Any comments from staff?
Mr. Chairman, you have a proposed draft motion associated with the, and the motion is stated in a favorable manner.
If there's no discussion from board members, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion. The South Kingstown Planning Board hereby reinstates the final plan approval originally granted on August 29th, 2018, for the woods at Stone Soup, Phase 3 subdivision, a proposed seven lot subdivision depicted on the plans entitled Record Plan Phase 3, The Woods at Stone Soup Farm, assessors plat 55-2, Lot 1, South Kingstown, Rhode Island, sheets 1 through 4, with revisions through January 5th, 2021, completed by Dupree Engineering, to Stafford Court, Cranston, RI 02920. This reinstatement is granted for a period of one year and shall expire on February 1st, 2022. This decision is based on the following findings of fact and conditions of approval as contained in the original final plan approval, and herein restated as follows, findings of fact A through F, and conditions of approval 1.
We have a motion by Maria. I saw Paul raise his hand for a second. Any discussion? Pam, will you take a roll?
Joe Murphy.
Hi.
Maria Mack.
Hi.
Paul Jordan.
Hi.
Joe Murphy. Oh, gosh, whoa. Okay, I might have to start over again here, guys.
Still on.
Steve Demasi.
Hi.
Peter Di Stefano.
Hi.
Susan Axelrod.
Hi.
And Pam Rubenoff, hi.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Uh, thank you. We'll see you when you're ready to come back.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a ma- uh, major land development project conceptual master plan for the residency of Holly. Mr. Kenyon, I assume you're back for that as well?
I am back for that, Mr. Chairman. Uh, once again, it's John Kenyon, attorney for the applicant, Scott Hallberg. We're here tonight on a master plan, public hearing for the residents on Holly, major land development property. The property is located on Holly Street. It's designated as tax assessors plat 57-1, Lot 110. Uh, the property is 1.3 acres in size, and it's in a commercial neighborhood zoning district. The applicant is proposing building six buildings, each containing two residential dwelling units, and two of the units would be designated as low to moderate income. Um, the debt development meets the density and setback requirements under the zoning ordinance. The applicant is requesting waivers from Article 9, Section 8 of the subdivision regulations for multi-household dwellings. That section requires a minimum front yard setback from a public street, which is infeasible on this lot, um, of at least 100 feet, and because lots, uh, only a little over 100 feet in depth in some areas. Also, that section requires that buildings be set back at least 50 feet from each other. Again, that's not feasible on this lot, since it makes more sense from a planning perspective to locate the buildings closer together to share driveways, to provide more of a buffer to the rear. We were before the board on a pre-application, I believe it was June of last year, and at that time, there were some concerns, uh, with the proposal that had been incorporated into the master plan. That plan showed four curb cuts with garages facing the, uh, the road. The board suggested an access road going in back of the units, and the applicant looked into that, but he was concerned that it would push the intensity of use towards the existing residential uses at the rear of the property. So instead, they redesigned it and turned the middle buildings so they could share driveway, and garages were no longer facing the street. The board also requested installation of a sidewalk, uh, which has been done, and the applicants here tonight, along with the project engineer, Josh Rosen. If I could have Josh just go over the existing conditions and then what's being proposed.
Great, thanks, Sean. Uh, for the record, Josh Rosen, registered professional engineer with Principia Engineering Incorporated, office at 27 Secconnet Ridge Drive in Tiverton. So as Mr. Kenyon summarized, uh, this property is located on assessors plat 57-1, Lot 110. Uh, we're just north of a property that, um, along Holly Street, currently is comprised of, uh, the medical office building, um, primarily with Wakefield Pediatrics, if you're familiar with that location. We're between, roughly halfway between, um, Main Street and, um, School Street to the north, Main Street to the south. So around this property, we've got a healthy mix of residential dwellings to the west, commercial businesses, commercial properties, along Holly Street, and also, uh, to the east. There are no wetlands on the property, um, within this subdivision parcel or development parcel, I should say. Uh, there are no floodplain issues. Right now, the applicant is proposing, uh, that we have a land development project consisting of six new buildings, two units for each building, uh, with multi-shared driveways, connections to water, sewer utilities on the street, and a proposed sidewalk, uh, connection to the existing system to the south. So if you're familiar with the area, one of the things that was discussed, um, at TRC was, uh, pedestrian connectivity. And, um, there is an existing sidewalk system south of this property. It runs along the west side of Holly Street. There is no sidewalk, uh, to the north of the property. There is a sidewalk, uh, to the east across from the frontage, um, along Lot 222. So our, our objective was to sort of, um, do two things with the sidewalk system. One, make an extension from the soloway section, um, to the north portion, uh, to the north, to, to collect a portion of the frontage, and then have an internal pedestrian access path, um, that would also service the main buildings within the property and get them out to the pedestrian system in Holly Street. At the time when we presented to TRC, we also offered the fact that there would, there could be a crosswalk installed, uh, in Holly Street to, um, to connect over to the east where the existing sidewalk system is. That was discussed at TRC, and it was recommended that we, um, we remove that location, which we will, and just have the sidewalk system the way it's portrayed on the, on the site plans. As Mr. Kenyon said, there were a couple waivers involved. Because this is a land development project and multi-household, um, we have the need to have the buildings closer to 50 feet from each other, and obviously, because the lot is, in some instances, not even 100 feet in depth from Holly Street, we can't meet that requirement of the regulations. But what we've done is, we've, we've tried to have, uh, a site plan that, moving forward, would be feasible in the sense that, uh, we can achieve the goals for the residential component with the affordability, have the infrastructure and utilities in place, so the plan's not crowded. So there's, uh, an adequate and healthy balance between open space and a pedestrian system, um, which is in harmony with the developments around this and the areas around it, being that it's in the core of Wakefield. We will, uh, expand on a pretty healthy buffer between the abutting residential properties, uh, from a landscape standpoint, moving forward. There'll be some element of building landscape incorporated with these units as well. And our stormwater, uh, because the nature of the development and the impervious surface is, is fairly small, given the size of the footprints and the shared nature of these driveways, we're able to, um, proceed with our design phase and likely utilize things like porous pavement, uh, for stormwater and some other LID techniques, uh, like bio-retention areas, for the impervious, uh, that would be remaining, which in, in a sense, would just be the roof runoff at that point. One of the things we've done at the early stages for this project is we've taken the site plan and the utility connections, and we've actually submitted to SUEZ Water. We have, uh, sent in a letter in the file. SUEZ has reviewed this not only for availability, but the water connections that you see, and the tie-ins have been approved the way they're illustrated on our plan. So we tried to sort of, um, make sure that, you know, one of the things is with a long piece of frontage with six buildings, that obviously, uh, we wanted to make the utility connections as efficient as possible. So, um, we've sort of taken one step in that direction with the water department in this case, SUEZ. We had an initial plan sent over through the, uh, TRC process to Public Services for Sewer. We tried to keep a majority of that collection system on the private property. As you'll see, the buildings are connected from a sewer standpoint with a, with a main line that goes along the frontage, but not in the main, uh, public right-of-way, and they connect with a man, into a manhole, and then out to Holly Street with one sewer connection, as opposed to a multiple individual connection. So we felt that that would help, uh, promote, you know, the need for the curb cuts or additional curb cuts and work in Holly Street. So a- as far as a master plan goes, I think, um, you know, we've covered the level of detail. We tried to have some, um, foresight into some of the potentials, uh, potential issues or questions, regarding the build-out and, and like I said, the utilities and the infrastructure, and whether or not everything could be accommodated on this site, and I think this plan kind of shows that we're headed in the right direction. So, if, if, uh, anyone would like to, uh, ask specific questions on the plan, I'm certainly happy to answer those at this time. And I also think that the applicant is, uh, with us tonight, um, along with Mr. Kenyon, um, and Mr. Hallberg could answer any questions as well.
Josh, uh, I believe at the last, uh, meeting, uh, one of the board members, I think it was Susan Axelrod, had asked about, the northernmost unit in turning those, um, that unit so the garage doors didn't face Holly Street. You said you would look into the feasibility of turning that, and you didn't make sure if you had room, so.
Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah, thank you, Steve. That, uh, I meant to touch on that, that the pre-application that, uh, was brought up to us, and if you, if you remember, actually, the three northernmost buildings, at the time, were all facing Holly Street. So we tried to look globally at those last three buildings to the north, and we found that, yes, for the, for the fourth and fifth building, we could turn those in inward and face each other, which we've done, and we've created that shared driveway element, uh, just with the standardization of these units and, and the footprints, that last, um, building, building, let's call it Building 6, uh, because of the setbacks, it just made it very difficult to, uh, turn that building 90 degrees and also accommodate, uh, a driveway accordingly. Um, it would just make the building sizes too narrow. So, we felt that, basically, for five out of the six units, we've been able to turn those doors off of the, off of the main road, um, with, with that sixth unit, just staying as is as a frontage building. So, uh, we're hoping that that was sort of a balance between, um, addressing the comment and the feasibility of the project at that point.
Okay, thank you, Josh.
You're welcome.
Board members have questions or comments?
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Maria.
Um, Josh, can you explain why, um, four out of six buildings have retention areas adjacent to them when the lot is relatively flat? That's the first question. The second is, can you illustrate, because it's very difficult to see on, on the map, how much, regardless of whether it's permeable or not, how much pavement area there is? And then the area just to the west of the buildings that is cross-hatched, it almost looks like the little wetland symbol that you sometimes see on maps. What is that meant to represent?
Okay, thank you, Maria. Uh, what, let's start with the first comment, uh, as far as the stormwater areas. So we do have six buildings, and I think I have Jay's mouse here. The idea was to integrate the stormwater with the overall landscape, the pedestrian areas, um, and the, uh, site open space. So our goal will be, again, in providing the stormwater areas, 1, 2, 3, and then the fourth to the north. We're looking to, uh, where we can share these retention areas between units. So they're not all dedicated by unit or by building. The, the central locations, uh, will likely, uh, share portions of buildings. In other words, we'll, we'll direct runoff in a, in a particular manner so that, um, we can centralize the stormwater off the gutters to those locations based on where they're placed. That's number, uh, number one. The area of the actual driveway surface, I can almost figure that out while I'm addressing the other comments. But the hatched, so moving down to the hatched area, that's, um, identified as our, our open space to meet the requirements, um, within Section 12, I believe it is, of the multi-household land development. We were required to designate or show an area of open space that met the, the requirements of the regulations, and, uh, the hatched area represents, uh, what we used in the calculation that you'll see on the plan, to, to show that we achieved the 10%, I believe it is, uh, minimum requirement of open space. One second, on, um, on the pavement calculation, was there one other item, or was that it, Maria?
No, that was it.
Okay, hang on one second. Wait, so for the, for the two shared driveways, and then for the single driveway for the sixth building, we have approximately, um, between 7,000 and 8,000, 7,000 and 8,000 square feet of surface area. Doesn't include, that's not the buildings, that's the, um, not the, not the walking paths, but it's the, the driveways.
So if you were to look at the map overall, everything other than that border of, uh, potentially landscaped area and the cross-hatched area, all of the remaining area is paved. It consists of roofs and paved areas, driveways, parking, other than the, other than the retention areas.
The, well, uh, there's a significant area that's, um, gre- that, that would, in theory, be green space outside of those parking areas, open space, the, the way it's hatched, buildings in retention. You have all of the, uh, bordering areas around the buildings be, along the frontage, like between the building edge and the sidewalk, that's proposed on the southern part of the lot. Any areas going to the north that are in front, in theory, in front of the buildings between the street line, that's all either green space or could be landscaped. There, the, the pavement is actually very minimal, or the, the surface area for the, for the driveway access and the parking is very minimal compared to the overall area. Um, quick calculation with 720 square foot units, the footprints, the way they're shown, we've got six buildings and then another 8,000 square feet, like I said, of actual parking surface. Dividing that by the total acreage, um, you know, it's a very low percentage. 1.3, quick calc here. Just to clarify, uh, I've got, you know, only about 29% of this site is either roof or parking slash driveway. So everything else would be your open space, the way it's shown, walking path, landscape, or green space.
Thanks. It's always good to test your math skills, right?
Trying to do it on, trying to do it on the fly. So if, you know, if I present it at preliminary and it's slightly different, don't forgive me, but that's, that's the rough, rough ballpark of it.
And you know, the reason I asked that question is because it's very difficult to see that on the illustration. So perhaps it would be possible to illustrate where those, uh, additional green space areas are on the site plan.
Absolutely. I agree. The plant, uh, the proposed conditions plan is a little busy, um, but we tried to accommodate everything on one plan. Normally, we would split it up, but I, I, I understand, and it, it's definitely possible. We can clarify and illustrate that a little more, in a little more detail.
Uh, other comments from board members? Pam, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I was just, because we're on the open space, Josh.
Yes.
I was just curious as to, I see the walking path from, um, kind of the middle, from one of the, um, joint driveways up, or I should say, in between the first set and the second set. Are the, are the most southerly, um, units, how do they access the open space? I see that there's a building, uh, setback, but it doesn't seem like there's a walking path there. So I'm just thinking of the two on the property line, and then the, the third one. So there's three on the, the south. Can you show us, uh, how they would access?
Yes, so I think one of the purposes of the walking path, uh, one is, you know, to provide some internal pedestrian circulation for these northern units, in the sense that there will be no direct access to the public sidewalk system along this frontage. So obviously, we went north to south with this walking path to traverse the property and end up to, to get to the public sidewalk system. It's probably, um, for the three southerly buildings, it, it's going to be a combination of, uh, will the access just be right out the driveway in this fashion, or along the driveway and on to the sidewalk system? If we felt that there would be some value to connecting a walking path, so that these folks here could get onto this system, then we could certainly do something along the edge of this building, I would say, or even out in the front to make a connection. But, you know, i- it seemed a little redundant because we're not sure, um, you know, how much use this path will get here from the perspective of these three buildings. It was more of a, a connection would be, you know, right out to the sidewalk here, whereas these folks would need to just have an internal way to get down, um, to this location.
Josh.
Yes.
This is Jay Parker. I don't think that, yeah, I don't think that you're moving the screen. You might have to accept the control again.
I'm sorry. Apologize. Uh, how about now?
Yep, yes.
Okay, so Pam, I'm sorry. So north, uh, north to south, this walking path was designed for these upper buildings or northern buildings to traverse the property to, to connect to this actual sidewalk extension here. These buildings, these three to the south, we felt that they would come out on their own, along their driveway, perhaps, and then pick up the system. And like, uh, what I was getting at was if we felt that maybe we wanted to add something, we could create a pathway here, perhaps, and, and connect it to the walking path. But, you know, again, we were, we were just trying to get, get everybody access to, to the, the sidewalk extension.
So, and I appreciate that. I was looking at it from the perspective of making sure that everybody has access to the open space.
Okay, well, then, then, um, perhaps we could, we could take, uh, a pathway to the open space in this fashion here from the, from the edge of this, uh, driveway, and then the three buildings below could, could gain access to the open space.
That looks like a great solution.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, uh, anything else, Pam?
That's it.
Paul, Joe, or Peter, have anything to add?
I'm good, Steve. Thank you.
Okay. Did staff have any comments before I turn this over for, uh, public?
Mr. Chairman, just a couple, potentially for clarity, Jamie Rabbit, planning director. And I know it came up at TRC with regards to pedestrian access. And I'll, I'll frame the question by, if I live in the house just north of the proposed development, how would I visit this development? How would I get there? Would I have to cross the street to the sidewalk and recross the street? Or you've already stated you're going to eliminate the crosswalk, it's a mid-block and not, uh, wouldn't warrant. And the second aspect is, is that path a public right-of-way? Or is it private?
So first comment, or, or.
All right, Josh, I threw a few things at you.
That's okay. Um, I'm not sure that that property to the north is a residence. I believe it's a, um, an accessory to the fire station, if I'm not mistaken.
Forest Fire Department.
Forest Fire Building, yes.
Okay, um, and then to answer the right-of-way, we, we would propose that the pathway is not necessarily going to be given as an easement to the general public. It's just for the benefit, uh, at this point, of those buildings within the site.
Okay, because I think TRC was asking you to continue that sidewalk, at least north of the most, you know, just past the north of the unit.
Okay. Like, in the right-of-way, you mean, the way it's shown, like, just in a continued extension?
Yeah.
Okay.
Jamie, I think it was John Shock didn't want the crosswalks on Holly.
John Shock discussed the, a mid-block has to meet, is subject to a number of warrants in order for it to go in, and John's opinion is it wouldn't meet those warrant requirements. Essence, warrants are criteria. And that, uh, you know, some And that, uh, you know, someone driving down a street doesn't typically see a crosswalk mid-block, they're usually at intersections.
Okay. Any other comments from staff?
Just, um, and you mentioned it tonight, I can't either, Attorney Kenyon did, or Mr. Rosen did about the locations of the buildings and the setbacks and the relationship of the northern building because the buildings were standardized and they couldn't do it because they were standardized, could you expand upon that? Because we have no architecture for the building or, you know, two-story, one-story, two-story dormers. You mentioned standardization, so you must have some idea what these buildings look like.
Sure, this is, uh, John Kenyon for the record, uh, the, the, the units are all going to be, uh, alike, um, I'll have, uh, Scott Hallberg maybe explain if they're going to be one to two stories and the other questions Jamie had.
Um, Steve, before we go to the public, I just want to make sure that, um, we allow time this evening to discuss, um, the waivers.
Yes.
Which doesn't relate specifically to the engineering.
Okay. Uh, Rich, did you, were you going to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that, um, uh, Josh, will we submit the D E M for a written permit?
Yes, that, that's the plan.
That's the plan, okay, good, good, I know you mentioned that, uh, the last time we spoke and, uh, I'm just hoping that carries through, um, that's, that's, I mean, that's all I had, I mean, generally speaking, we don't, we don't allow mid-block crossings like that crosswalk, um, and that's why, uh, you know, you don't want cars, usually it's, um, at a point of transition for, for vehicles if they're coming up on a stop sign or something like that, so generally you just don't like to have a mid-block, that's why we didn't, we didn't want to see that one there, so. That's all I got.
All right, and?
Quick comment?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, hi, this is Susan, oh, we just talked about extending the footpath beside the second unit up, um, that second unit, I think that that's their only private space, where we, we were proposing to put that footpath, I like the idea of the footpath, but I think that that unit doesn't, everybody else seems to have a little private space, a little yard, is that the only space for that unit? And if it becomes a footpath, does that then become public space?
Maybe they could tuck it along the, uh, the landscaped edge, so it's not right up against the building.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, anything else, Susan?
Um, no, I'm very happy to see the buildings turned sideways with the garages not facing Holly Street, that was, that was, that's really good, I'm happy to see that. Um, but I am eager, I am eager to see, um, the artist's rendering of the building and what the view from Holly Street, now that it's the side of the building, I'm very interested in seeing what the, what the public's view of these buildings will be if you're standing on Holly Street, so I look forward to seeing those too.
Um, Mr. Kenyon, Maria brought up a good point, why don't you go over the waivers you're requesting before we go to public comment?
Sure, so, um, under the, uh, multi-household section of the subdivision regulations, uh, there's a, a multiple standards, and this project meets all of them except for, one of them requires, uh, 100 feet of frontage, uh, from a public road, and in this case, a, as we stated, that the depth of this property is, uh, almost at 100 feet in some places, so it'd be virtually impossible to, to meet that requirement. Um, the other waiver is that the buildings are to be located 50 feet apart, and, um, again, we're trying to keep the units together to share driveways, um, so it, it wouldn't make sense, and plus it would be infeasible to, to keep them 50 feet apart and still have the shared driveways and the open space and the buffer in the rear. The, those two provisions, I'm trying to think of the last time I had a project before the board where those were applied, and I might be wrong, but I think it was probably Brook Edge Village, um, in Peasdale, um, and in that case, that was a, a large, I forget exactly how many units, I think 28-unit multifamily building, and I, in my mind, that's what those requirements were really for, were, uh, large multifamily buildings and not as much the small-scale, um, units like this, uh, it would make sense to have the large buildings be 50 feet apart, but I'm not sure why you would have these smaller units be 50 feet apart. And regarding the 100-foot setback, in the town where these uses are permitted, I'm not sure how many lots are available that could actually meet those requirements. Um, so in, in our opinion, it's just, would be better planning to waive those and allow this type of development.
And Mr. Kenyon, in regular, uh, commercial neighborhood, um, setting, I believe the setback would be 25 feet, is that correct?
It, it is 25 feet.
Okay, but because it was multi-housing, it was, it was supposed to be 100, just so everybody understands that.
And then, may, maybe some of the other board members remember other projects where it was applied, but like I said, the only one, the last one I can remember is Brook Edge Village, and that was a long time ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, Brook Edge Village was unique because it was a, um, it was basically a giant basin, so there are a lot of site constraints on that.
Hmm.
Um, but I think my concern, um, speaks to, um, staff comments, which I agree with, that I don't believe that you can call something a hardship when it's basically a self-created by design, um, due to the, obviously the applicant knew the size and the width of this lot, um, I think that if they reduced it by one building, they would have a better, um, project and they would be able to, uh, probably meet some of the standards more effectively. I, so again, I don't think this is a, an undue hardship situation, which is the way the language is written in the regulations.
Well, my comment to that, Maria, is, you know, we're, it's the affordable housing bonus that, that pushes some of these, um, waivers. The, uh, if, if we didn't have the extra two units as affordable, then we probably wouldn't need the waivers for the building separation, and, but it's just the, the world we're living in right now to accommodate affordable housing, we, we have to look at some of these concessions, and obviously it's, uh, other board members have a, an opinion on that as well. Is there anyone, uh, in the audience, this is a public hearing, that would, uh, like to speak, I see we have one hand raised from Francesca, uh, Jay, if you can bring her in, please?
Francesca, uh, Autumn?
Hi, everybody.
There you go. Hello, can you just state your name and address, please?
My name is Autumn Francesca, I'm at 96 Oak Street, just a block away from the Holly construction.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Can you hear me okay? Because I'm on the cell phone, I'm not on?
No, you're coming in loud and clear.
Sweet, okay, so in preparation for this meeting, I thought I'd take a look in, on the website to see what South Kingstown's vision was for all this additional housing, because I'm living in the wake of a 10-residence, uh, development that just went up, uh, in the middle of a green belt between Cleveland and Oak, uh, so I got really curious about 12 more units going up just another block away, and I found, uh, to my happiness, the comprehensive and community plan, and in it, uh, it was dated back in 2017, planning forward, you know, for, uh, many years forward, 10, 15 years forward, and in it I found something interesting on page 93, it was talking about that the town must evaluate its strategies for developing a diversity of housing affordable for year-round residents, and the reason I bring that up is because when I read about these particular homes that are 720 square feet each, it seems like a great investment for an out-of-state person to gobble up and use as an inexpensive summer vacation home. And I have issue with that only because I'm referring to your own comprehensive plan, and it states on page 93, as of 2015, seasonal units are 17 and a half percent of S K's total housing units, and it goes on to say, it does not appear at this time that these seasonal homes are being rented during the high season or to students, but this type of activity should be monitored. For developers, building these types of homes can be more lucrative than developing LMI, the low, medium income housing or market rate affordable housing. So I'm questioning if these units are going to turn, I mean, I'm, I, I don't know who the demographic it's marketing, I mean, it would be ideal if it was seniors, I can totally get that, that seniors, you know, are downsizing, they want to stay in the neighborhood, that's a beautiful thing, but those would all have to be LMI units, in my opinion, not just two, two out of the 12. So the other 10, I'm just questioning who they're being marketed to demographically, because my sense is that they'll probably just get gobbled up, I mean, everybody knows New Yorkers are coming here, especially in the wake of COVID, to just buy properties because it's so beautiful here, how can you blame anybody? Um, but I'm concerned about the vacancy of these units throughout the year, or them just turning into Airbnb specials that create a transient people in our precious Wakefield Village. So I'm just throwing that out there, just something to consider, just because I read it in the comprehensive and community plan, as far as what, you know, I, I guess my, if I'm asking a question, my question would be to the applicant, who are you targeting demographically, these, uh, units to?
Hey, Mr. Kenyon?
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, good to hear from you, Autumn.
Hi, there's?
This is John Kenyon, um, and I'll, I'll answer and then maybe, um, you know, have Scott Hallberg, the, uh, the applicant, address part of it, I, I just wanted to state that, um, you're right, that New Yorkers are coming here and gobbling as much of it property as they can, I think right now about 95% of my clients are from New York. Um, this, this isn't the type of project or units they're really looking for, um, in general, I, uh, they're looking for more down in Mattoonik, Green Hill, in that area, though, I mean, there is a chance that these could be attractive to them, there's no way for us to prohibit someone providing these for a certain use. Um, but maybe Scott Hallberg, um, who's the applicant, is also, uh, a real turn down, maybe he can give you, uh, some more ideas on who this would be marketed towards. Scott, are you there? Scott, are you on mute?
Can you hear me now?
Go ahead, Scott.
Okay, hi, Scott Hallberg, applicant, uh, just one little clarification, they are going to be, uh, the plan is to, uh, to be two-story, uh, units, so I believe it'll be in the 1,400-foot range, um, I, I don't know exactly who all the buyers are, uh, I too am from Wakefield and care about the town and the village, uh, I would say that it would be more apt to be somebody who is from town, downsizing, uh, they're only two-bedroom units, I, I can't see him being a huge, uh, investor buy to rent out.
Okay. Uh, Amy, did you have any comments, uh, on the subject?
This is Amy, legal counsel, I have no comments, um, available to answer any questions you might have.
I was just referring to her, uh, I mean, we have no control over who's going to buy a market rate, I mean, and it's really kind of hard to talk it, to target, um, a particular clientele and not say that it's somebody from out of state might fit that criteria.
Yeah, okay, okay, um, my apologies, right, the, the specific question, uh, the, the LMI units obviously will be deed restricted, um, or, um, occupancy by low and moderate, uh, income folks, the market rate units agreed, they can be, um, they can be rented, they can be owner-occupied, out-of-state, whoever, um, and I'm not sure that it would be a reasonable condition to, um, impose any kind of restrictions on, on who can buy these, especially considering, I don't think we do that for other projects, right? There is a conversation that, that certainly could be had about, um, short-term rentals, I don't see that as appropriate, um, to address with this project.
Okay, thank you.
Why is that?
As I said, um, this is Amy, uh, the planning board typically does not impose restrictions on who can purchase property, other than, um, property that's required to be deed restricted for, um, inclusionary zoning or as part of a comprehensive permit application, um, and there is a concern that if the planning board were to start imposing those types of restrictions, um, you know, there's a concern of disparate treatment, since to my knowledge, that restriction has never been imposed before by the planning board, and again, we can impose reasonable conditions on approvals, um, I question whether a restriction on, um, who could purchase these would pass muster if it were, um, reviewed by a court.
Oh, I'm not talking about, uh, I don't know if it's protocol for me to respond, I'm sorry.
Well, if you had a follow-up question.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I'm not, uh, I'm not concerned necessarily who's buying them from out of state or out of country even, I, I'm just concerned about vacancy and short-term rentals, and if this is going to turn into like an Airbnb situation for people who just want to invest, because I was surprised to hear that they were 1,440, uh, square feet, I thought the plans showed that they were 720, so like, perhaps that's my mistake, uh, for each unit.
Yeah, the town, um, has not chosen to address short-term rentals, and obviously they, the council could, um, adopt an ordinance addressing that, right? We don't have a rental registration ordinance like Naragansett, um, so I, I don't think imposing a restriction on rentals for the market rate units in this development, um, would, uh, be fair, given that the town has no, no ordinance of general application on rentals.
Thank you, so I guess I'm just planting a seed for us to consider if indeed we are concerned according to this comprehensive plan that we should be evaluating strategies for developing housing for year-long residents, um, I'm just planting a seed that maybe it's something that could be considered, uh, not necessarily specific to this development, but this development raises concern, that maybe, if we're getting more and more of these kinds of developments, that it might be worth considering such a, such a plan, uh, moving forward.
Um, Steve and Amy, just wondering if Ms. Francesca, upon reading the comprehensive plan, uh, maybe was thinking about, uh, owner-occupied projects in which we have in the past, limited to 55 and older?
Yeah, right, um, this is Amy, there are, um, certain developments and certain use codes that are limited to occupancy by, um, I hate to say senior citizens, because 55 isn't senior, but age-restricted developments, let's just call it that, so, right, there are, there are a number of ways that the town can restrict or limit occupancy, the issue of rentals is something that the town has not addressed at this point, so that's why I would say it's not in the planning board's purview to impose such a restriction, I think the board can, can note the, the suggestion and can certainly, um, choose to act on it if, if it deems appropriate at a future work session.
Okay, any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Jay, we have another, uh, hand-raised Edward Chamillion. Cameron.
Okay, I'm gonna have to promote Mr. Kamaline to a panelist.
Go ahead, Edward.
Okay, you can hear me now?
I, I can, yes.
Okay, great. Um, my name's Ed Kamaline. Uh, I live at ninety-seven Oak Street. I am the house at the furthest, uh, farthest, uh, northern end of the development. I just have a couple of questions, uh, regarding, uh, one, the walking path. Um, and if it was my understanding that you put the walking path in so that the northern unit could be connected to the, um, sidewalk, um, I'm questioning, why didn't you just continue the sidewalk all the way across the front instead of directing public traffic to a path that is gonna come back behind the units, out of sight, out of the view of the street? Um, because if I'm a pedestrian walking down that path, uh, down that sidewalk, um, coming from, say, like, the, uh, the southern end of the street, uh, and I come to a point where the path takes a ninety-degree turn left, I'm going to continue walking down that path. Um, so I, it seems, it seems illogical to bring people back into that property, back behind those buildings. Um, and I've lived here, oh, uh, since ninety-two, and that spot is kind of back behind everything, down a little hill, and you put it back behind buildings and it's going to be even more out of sight, out of mind, if you don't mind me saying so. Um, then the second question I have is the retention pond at that northern end by, right directly behind my property. Um, during heavy rainstorms, that whole area back there will go completely underwater. Um, I know that because I've seen it. I've seen my kids swing set underwater back there. Um, if that retention pond is built there, is there gonna be a means to make sure that that does not run back into my property?
Jay? Miss, Miss. Uh, not Jay, I'm sorry, I meant Josh. I saw that confused look, Jack. Josh, did you want to, uh, answer the questions on that?
Um, sure. Drainage. The first comment about the, the walking path, obviously, we stated before that that walking path is not intended for, uh, public pedestrian use, um, just the internal use, so that'd be the three buildings on-site. If, if we continue with that design going forward, then, uh, I would suggest and possibly talk with public services about, um, a way to maybe sign, that terminus of the public portion of the sidewalk and additional signage maybe on the walking path to indicate that, you know, the walking path's private, the town sidewalk ends, um, where, where it's shown on this plan. So that could be something that we do going forward in order to prevent the intrusion of like, uh, just the general public across that land and behind those buildings. Because like I said, otherwise, we're intending that it could be used by up to, uh, six, uh, building owners, and, and that would be it. Um, our sense, again, from the T R C and, and whatnot, was that, uh, integrating a walking path with a sidewalk extension uh, was, you know, a more favorable approach, e- especially considering, um, to the north of this project is a town-owned, uh, land with a fire station. So that, you know, there would be less of a benefit to continuing, um, the public sidewalk, uh, within the, within the right-of-way. So that was the perspective we took on the path in general. And like I said, if we need to, um, creatively find a way to, to, um, illustrate that, if, if this plan moves forward accordingly, then I think that's one of the approaches we'll take. Uh, secondly, on the drainage issue, um, we would certainly design those systems so that they could, uh, fully contain the stormwater that would be directed to them on-site without it, uh, requiring an overflow certainly to the down-gradiant properties. Um, and moreover, those areas are not intended right now to accommodate or to incorporate any other, uh, runoff volume other than what comes off the roofs. So we're not, uh, proposing that these would be fully functioning retention basins that are gonna take street water, et cetera. They're disconnecting the roof runoff fo- for, from these buildings. So, um, where we're sort of, uh, anticipating that these would be a very subtle areas that are, are gonna achieve our drainage needs um, and also incorporate, incorporate well with the overall landscape. So, um, hopefully that would mitigate the, the concern. Again, that's another reason why there's multiple locations on the site, um, to break those areas up rather than to just make one common, uh, drainage area. Um, we felt that was, uh, i- in better keeping with the way this project is laid out. So I think that, those are the two, two answers.
Um, may I add, may I ask a question? Uh, this is Rich, probably a town engineer. Josh, I, I thought, I, or maybe I'm wrong, and maybe for the rest of the board, but I thought earlier in the discussion, we talked about extending that sidewalk all the way along the entire frontage. Was that, was I, am I mistaken on that?
I think perhaps, um, I think perhaps the T R C mentioned that, but at the last, I, I have in my notes.
No, I thought we, I thought we said, I thought it was discussed tonight that it was, that it was gonna, maybe, I guess I'm wrong, but I thought.
Paul, I, I thought that, um, I thought that Jamie brought it up as well.
Yeah, well, again, there's a, yeah, and, and that could still be something that we will discuss with, with the applicant here. Um, but I just want to, you know, obviously, again, make the point that in the location of the northerly section of this property, across Holly Street to the east, there is a sidewalk, um, it currently existing. Um, that's not the case on the southern end. So I just, I, I think we tried to integrate both elements into the plan. Like I said, uh, an extension from the south to capture a portion of the property where along its frontage, there were no sidewalks, because there aren't on across the street in the southerly location. Uh, but then we tried to integrate, uh, some, a, a passive pedestrian system for the building owners within the property by way of that path. And again, figuring that it would be a little redundant to put it in the public right-of-way through that section, uh, because, uh, that's a good view, uh, if that's Jay, yep. That's that, that's the east side of Holly across basically the three northern buildings. So we just thought that would be redundant.
But if we're deciding, and we've already said we don't want a mid-block crossing on a crosswalk, so to terminate it there just doesn't seem to make sense. I, and I know that you, you bring it all the way to the end of the property, it terminates there, but at least it gives the town an opportunity to finish off on what, what appears to be town property at the end. You know, maybe, maybe the town talks about finishing off that continuity to get it all the way over. Um, but it just doesn't make sense to me to, to, to terminate halfway down the property. I mean, I, I thought, I, and, and I, I guess the only reason why I'm saying is I thought that tonight we talked about extending it all the way down, but, but I guess not.
No, there was a, there was a comment early on about, about, from Jamie, I think, about extending it. Um, again, I, I, I have no, no problem, and I don't know if, um, Mr. Hallberg wants to speak on it right now. I don't want to speak for him about the viability, um, of that additional extension of the sidewalk. If you, he wants to, uh, Scott, do you want to say anything about that right now, as far as the possibility of that?
Sh- yeah, sure. Can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so, yeah, we talked about extending that sidewalk down there, but it seems to me at T R C or somewhere, there was discussion about not extending it the whole way, uh, particularly because it was, uh, on the o- opposite side of the road as well. And who would it serve on the west side of Holly?
Uh, if you don't mind me saying, it would serve the people who are gonna be living in your buildings.
And, and that's why we put in that, that kind of walkway around the back. I mean, we, we talked about this before, and if, if they want the sidewalk in front, it goes in front. But I thought that, I thought that the board at, at the T R C meeting, we talked about not extending it down the whole length of the property.
And, and if you don't, I'm, and I'm trying not to be argumentative, but if, if I'm a, if I'm a mom pushing a stroller, I don't want to take, uh, my stroller down the, uh, dirt path into the back of the building in, where I would rather have it be along a, a public way, uh, sidewalk. Um, and that could include not just a mom with a stroller, but somebody with a disability or even a wheelchair. Um, and so I, I just, it doesn't seem logical to me that if you're trying to connect the northern building to the sidewalk, that you'd make them walk through a dirt path in the back.
Uh, you know, also, Scott, um, no, I get what you're saying. I think that I, we did go back and forth with the technical review. I remember that. If, I, what I'd prefer is that, that we, we talk about it further. I, you know, I, I'm just telling you, I'd prefer to see even your walkway out. If you're gonna, if you're, if you're deciding that, if you're saying, well, I want to do one or the other, the, the walkway behind or the walkway in front, the walkway behind sounds nice to me. If you lived in that, if you lived in that little cluster, you'd be able to walk, you know, meander through the property. I think that'd be nice. But if you're picking one or the other, then I think that the improvement at the roadway would be better, because then we can finish it off. At some point, we could finish it off across, um, you know, at the, at the station, and then we could even, um, you know, begin to think about how it crosses, um, you know, down further, how it crosses, uh, this is street, is that, is that school? You know, we could even think about how it crosses there or somehow gets over to, uh, you know, because there is a crosswalk on the other side of School Street. There was a, um, a sidewalk on the other side of School Street. So, you know, I, I just, I, I think that we need to talk about it more unless this board, uh, decides differently. But I think that it's something we should probably just discuss a little further.
And, and, and Rich.
If you're willing to have that discussion, I think that we probably should.
Yeah, and, and Rich, uh, yeah, thank you. I, I'm happy to have that discussion. I, I, I thought, you know, it seemed to me that we were kind of, uh, you know, pointed in the direction that's shown on the plan, but we're, you know, we're more than happy to have the discussion.
I understand.
Yeah, I, I was on that T R C, I think, and it kind of went back and forth and whether it was redundant, because it was across the street and the fact that, uh, if you did put the sidewalk on the west side, it wasn't gonna go all the way to School Street. So it was, eventually, you'd have to cross over and, um, so I, I don't know if we had a clear definitive answer on a resolution of that, but, uh, certainly, uh, other board members can state an opinion there.
You know, if, if we are as a community advocating for complete streets, which we are, preferably the green and complete streets version, then this would be a good example to set. So I would certainly be in favor of extension of the sidewalk.
Are you, are you guys planning on curbing, curbing this across the, the front? What are your thoughts? It's not now.
I, I would say if the, for the portion of the side, like, the sidewalk being installed would have to be obviously curved. Is that what you're asking? Instead of a, instead of a flush, like, at-grade sidewalk?
The OR or B R M. I think it needs to be curved. I think it needs to be curved, but, okay.
Can I just give one quick local perspective on the traffic flow of people along that street? If you don't mind, um, if you continue that sidewalk to the fire station and then hopefully eventually all the way to the School Street, um, you would not have people exiting a sidewalk, as you already said, you don't want a mid, a mid-block crosswalk. Those cuts into what is now the job lot parking lot and also the bank, there's a lot of vehicle traffic coming and going out of those, um, cuts, um, more so there than anywhere else, um, along the street, or at least that end of the street. Um, and if you have a sidewalk terminate right there, you're putting pedestrians at a spot where there's going to be cars coming and going out of those parking lots.
Okay. All right, Ed, did you have any other comments?
No, thank, you guys were very helpful. Thank you.
Okay, and we'll come back, uh, when we finish public discussion. Maybe we'll come back to the sidewalks and get an opinion on the, uh, board mem, from the board members. Uh, we have another hand-raised Jim Vasquez. You want to unmute yourself? Okay.
Hello. Thank you for having the meeting.
You just state your name and address, please?
Yes, uh, James Vasquez, sixty-three Oak Street.
Thank you.
And I am the owner of the property at the Southernmost section. The one that has the two buildings directly behind me, according to the plan. And I would, uh, just res- respectfully request that you do not grant that waiver of the fifty feet that was required between the two buildings and so that there would only be one unit behind my house instead of two. And then what, uh, Maria Mack said earlier about the Northernmost building needing a waiver. If they just eliminated that, then you would have, um, eight units and you would only need one L M I. If, I think that is how the law states, if I'm correct.
Okay. Any other comments?
Uh, no, I just think that because we have four single-family homes on lots right behind you, trying to get twelve, um, residences on a smaller area of land is just, I just don't think that that's a good idea. I think that that's, uh, poor planning on the, uh, I think that would just be poor planning for that property. Uh, Mr. Hallberg owning the Southernmost property there knows that property, knows it well. So I, I think twelve is just too aggressive for that piece of property. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vasquez.
Mrs. Damasi?
Yes.
Could I just follow up on the, like, the waiver? And I know Maria brought it up, and Maria's points are always very good about these layouts. So I just wanted to give a, just a small perspective, because obviously the comment just came up here. Um, when we looked at that one particular waiver, obviously, we, Mr. Kenyon spoke to the one-hundred-foot waiver, which, given the lot, is, uh, basically prohibitive to any sort of array of buildings, uh, because of its depth. The fifty foot is required between the parallel rows of the building. And w- we did sort of try to lay it out with even the six, uh, with the six buildings as well as a reduced number of buildings at the outset of the development plan. Um, one thing that I saw with that layout, and you can maybe relate to it by looking at the plan, the farther away we get with this building, it's sort of detracts from the type of, uh, neighborhood style of development that we were trying to illustrate here. It retract, it, it takes away in the sense that we're spreading out this site. And although we may, you could in theory remove a building and possibly achieve the fifty feet, we're still creating more of an atmosphere of impervious surface, as opposed to the green space and the integration of some of these open space elements that we have on this plan. If we were to inevitably make these distances fifty, we have to connect our shared systems, parking, driveways, and access to these units that are, have been set up to face each other. And that sort of works against what we were trying to portray with this development, if that makes sense. So, you know, keeping them the thirty feet in between, uh, as they face each other would be more conducive to, uh, the smaller impervious footprint here that we have and the, the benefit that would promote this extra green space. If, if, so that's kind of our perspective. I just wanted to touch on that as far as, um, why this waiver seems to be, uh, would, would seem to be a benefit for the project as opposed to something that would be considered, you know, a negative, um, o- otherwise, so.
And this, we have to keep in mind, too, this is kind of transitional housing between commercial highway and residential. So it's, it's a segue from one to the other, and, um, I think we should keep that in mind. And plus, the, the town's goal to build affordable housing. And again, to get the affordable housing, we have to provide the developer with a bonus to make it feasible.
And to, to the gentleman's point that spoke, the fifty foot is not, wouldn't be required between those side, those two side buildings. That's not where it's required. It's, it's the parallel rows.
Okay. All right, thank you. Jake, can we have the screen back so we can see everyone? I don't see any more hands raised. If the board members would like to discuss the sidewalk issue, I'd like to hear some comments.
Mr. Jake.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, Jake.
We do have one more hand raised. Francesca has her hand up.
Okay. You bring her in, please. Go ahead, Francesca.
No, I, I had a question, but it's unrelated to the sidewalks. So since that's fresh, I'm more than happy to wait until the discussion is complete with the sidewalks. If that's all right.
Okay. All right. So I'll ask the board members again. Paul?
Yeah, I would definitely be in favor of extending that sidewalk up to the fire station. And I also apologize for not knowing better, but commercial neighborhood zoning. What else could go here? What are the possibilities? Could this be a strictly commercial development in this?
It could be some commercial. In fact, is some years back when I was on the board previously, there was a proposal to go in here and we had quite a turnout from the Oak Street neighborhood because they were fearful of a restaurant.
Sure. Well, that's what I was just thinking.
And that's why I said, you know, this is a good transitional of condo or family housing between single family homes on Oak Street versus the commercial highway of the, the job lot, the bowling alleys and.
Okay, that's why, yes, because I, I think you're, you're spot on with that. It is, it is a transitional area and something's going to go in there that.
It's a good spot for.
And housing.
Okay.
I also, I also just wanted to quickly clarify to Paul, commercial neighborhood is destined to be the least intrusive kind of commercial. The analogy that was always used was like the village bakery, although in the regs, it does allow up to ten thousand square foot buildings, which is something that we have discussed in the past, but the nature of commercial neighborhood so that, was that it would be small scale and fit into a village kind of site.
Thank you.
Joe Murphy?
I am for the continuation of the sidewalk. I think people just take the path, the shortest path. So I think it's illogical to think that somebody walking down the street north on the west side would take a left turn and go around the back of the property. However, I will also say that I do think that that path that goes behind the house serves somewhat of a different function in that it makes accessible both physically and to some extent mentally, the open space. So I mean, I still think there should be some type of dirt path around the back there.
Okay, thank you. Susan?
I also agree with what Joe just said about continuing the sidewalks down the whole length of Holly Road, at least as far as the end of the property. I think that you are inviting jaywalking. If you don't have a, a crosswalk and the sidewalk abruptly ends, students walking to the high school or other pedestrians are just going to cross the street at any given point along that roadway to get over to the other side to the sidewalk. And I think that's the ultimate result if the sidewalk isn't continued, hopefully to the end of, of Holly Road at some point.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Peter or Pam?
Yeah, I guess sidewalk. I mean, if it just stops at the end, I'd love to see Rich and his team pick up the rest of it and run it down to the end of the street, but Rich never, Rich always tells me they won't do that. So.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's, and that was part of the discussion at T R C. If the town wasn't going to continue it, it, it seemed a burden on the, on the applicant when there was a sidewalk available across the street. But John Shox said sidewalks are expensive, not in his budget. Pam?
Yeah, I, I kind of agree with, with what the others have said. I, I would envision at some point, you know, hoping that as Maria's pointing out, this could become an example of how we're doing more complete streets and and, you know, who knows, you know, the other side is a real challenge because of all the property that, you know, in the driveways and such like that. But maybe in the future that will be redeveloped and there's an opportunity to manage the, the traffic patterns on the other side and, and help to, you know, make that more of a corridor.
I, you know, I, I hear the board and I think the one favorable aspect of, that I see of continuing it is that it defines that roadway a little better. So maybe, hopefully it maybe be a little traffic calming and so, and maybe we'll get a little more of a streetscape. We still have Francesca out there for final comments. Autumn Francesca?
Hi, guys. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so just another comment again, after reading the comprehensive community plan, policy two point four says something about sustain, creating a sustainable rate of development in order to preserve small town character. I'm just curious what the town's definition is about a sustainable rate of development because the residents of Oak Street are just getting through the devastation of the new development that was behind Oak Street and one and a half acres of trees just came down. And, you know, that was a little difficult to swallow. So there's ten units going in there, not even units. They're, they're homes is my understanding, single, mix of single family and duplex homes. And now we're talking about adding twelve more units just on the other side of Oak Street. So I'm just curious how this fits into the sustainable rate of development in order to preserve the small town character. If there's any comments on that?
I'll let staff address that.
Mr. Chairman, again, Jamie Rabbit, Planning Director. Again, it's a stated policy, kind of along the line of goal and objectives. However, the town has not established any regulation with regards to limiting a number of permits or structures to be built in a year. So it's a goal to develop regs that have a sustainable aspect to the number. The town hasn't taken any steps toward setting a number. You know, there are some communities throughout the country who in essence limit the number of building permits that can be issued in a given year. But South Kingstown has not taken those. Again, it's a stated policy with regards to sustainability and there have been some efforts in the style of homes and regulations associated with the development of those homes and residential units that lead to some sta, sustainability, but there are no set guidelines from a regulatory side limiting the number of units to be built in any given timeframe.
Thank you, Jamie.
We're talking about the same street though. We're not even talking about the entire town of South Kingstown. We're talking about the same street on one end and on the back end. It just seems a bit much. That's, I just wanted to share that comment.
Well, we, we are seeing.
I appreciate the comment.
We are seeing this type of development because you have water and sewer. You have the utilities. And in the case of behind you on, on Oak Street, I mean, that property was residentially zoned.
Yeah, but I'll remind you, since you brought it up, there was no utilities, water or sewer back there and it was unmerged.
Well, but it was in, it was in the area where they're available. And if the developer's willing to put them in, they are, were in this sewer feasibility area. So he just had to put them in at his expense. But I mean, I think the town in general, we are pushing for infill to preserve the outer, the outer rim of the, of the town where a lot of our open spaces and our, our greenway. And where we have utility, the sewer and water available makes the, the most sense for this type of housing.
So with that, would therefore maybe consider a traffic light on the corner of school and Kingstown Road? If you're going to have all these new residences within two blocks of each other? Was there any thought about traffic flow? I don't know how much traffic is generated. I mean, maybe it's unnecessary for a traffic light, but it just seems like, you know, twenty-two new residences within a one square block just seems a bit much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Damasi?
Yes.
I just wanted to, for the record, just point out that after, you know, hearing the board's comments and staff, I think that as a design team and the applicant right now, we are definitely amenable to extending the sidewalk to the north, northerly property boundary. That's number one. So we, going forward, we could certainly incorporate that into our plans. I'd also like to say we would still like to keep as well the element of the walking path within the property. So you also, moving forward, we'll, we'll continue that to be proposed for the residents of this parcel or on this parcel. Obviously, we would terminate it most likely between the, the buildings and not extend it all the way to the sidewalk so that we wouldn't promote people deviating from the public sidewalk onto the property, but it could certainly be revised to allow all six units, all six buildings to have access to the open space. And then we have highlighted poss, some possible features along that path, benches and stuff like that, that, that again, could be used internally. So I think we, we're in agreement, again, just to say that, that we would modify going forward at the next stage, a, a designed sidewalk to the end of the property and also keep, keep the walking path as well as an element for use by the, by the residents within the site.
Great. That's good to hear. All right. Comments from board members? Any more comments about the project? Susan?
So one of the callers, Mr. Caroline mentioned that he lives up in the north part of the property and that his backyard is often wet, which is where we're putting that retention basin in. And I wonder if someone can speak to how wet that space is and whether we're creating a retention basin that's going to breed mosquitoes for that neighborhood and whether that needs to be addressed. Like, I don't know how wet it is, but he said his swing set is often underwater. I'm talking about the retention basin at the very northern edge of the property. Mr. Rosen, do you know if that's a wet, generally a wet spot?
We've walked the property, on the property, it's not. I can't speak to the, you know, the local specific topography on that gentleman's lot. I, I don't know if there's a low lying area, but based on the elevations on the mapping we have, everything seems to drain from an east to a west direction across those properties. But I can, you know, I could take more information from that butter and, and maybe we could look into it and make sure that certainly we're not going to exacerbate a condition. But, you know, like I said, on our property itself, we, we don't, we don't see any of those issues at this point.
Thank you.
So that runoff that you're going to contain would include the driveways, Josh, as well?
As of right now, those areas of bio retention would just be for the roofs. We're going to try to mitigate the driveways with a permeable porous surface system.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
And Josh, what do you have for water table and soils in that general area?
We haven't done the specific onsite soil testing. Obviously, that will, will come at, at the preliminary, preliminary plant stage. The soils onsite right now are Merimac land complexes, urban land. Typically, they're a little unpredictable. So we need to get out there and do the, the soil hydrology study to support whatever system we have. So at the next, obviously at the next stage, we'll have more detailed information for you. And, you know, as you know, with, with the various stormwater B M Ps that we have in our toolbox, L I D and otherwise, there are certain systems that are better for certain site conditions. So we'll, we'll definitely take those into consideration.
Okay, Mr. Vasquez has his hand raised again.
My wife, Susan, wants to make a statement.
Okay, go ahead, Susan.
I lived in that area, the majority of my younger years before the area north of Mr. Caroline's property was developed. It was a swamp area that had been filled just prior to Mr. Caroline's building by another property owner. There is a lot of water that is moved under that area. I'm not familiar with the details of the water table. However, it's not surprising that Mr. Caroline has had water problems there.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any further comments from the board and what would we like to see on this?
I, I just, I wanted to once again touch upon the waiver, both from a procedural and precedent viewpoint. I, I think it's important that this is, when someone asks for a waiver simply because it's an inclusionary zoning project, and of course, we're only getting twenty percent affordable units in, in such, it's, it's not a comp permit, it's not a cottage zoning project. I, I think that it shouldn't just be a given that a waiver is okay without any kind of a conversation. It shouldn't be just an assumption. Because once we start to allow that as a given, then going forward, other applicants will think that that's also just a formality rather than something that they need to prove. And, you know, I wonder if the applicant would be willing to make one of the market rate units an additional affordable unit if they were given a waiver. Again, just trying to, from the, the standpoint of a lack of affordable housing and the way that we're never going to catch up with these twenty percent projects, just thought I would put that out there.
Comments from board members? Yeah, I'm not sure that asking him to, to do another affordable unit. The whole idea of the bonus is that, to make him be able to pay for it. So to make him, yes, Joe?
I just would ask to get Amy's opinion on that. I mean, I'm actually in favor of what Maria says. I mean, affordable housing is always a balance of what the needs of the community are, what you're giving to the applicant versus what the community is getting back. So I just would want to hear from Amy whether she felt we were on solid ground with what Maria was asking for.
This is Amy. I, Maria is correct that the waivers, there's no different standard for waivers when they're requested by an applicant proposing a conventional subdivision or land development project versus one with inclusionary zoning. It's the, the same standard applies to both. As for requiring an extra L M I unit, I mean, you do have to review the project that's presented. And it's your decision to, it's your determination whether it meets the standards for approval. If it's denied, obviously it needs to be explained. So I, I think you'll need to, so can you require it? You can only require it if you're denying the project and, and, you know, the, finding that the application doesn't meet the standard set forth for approval. You certainly can, can ask.
It was an ask.
Yeah.
Steve, this is Paul Jordan.
Yes, Paul.
Yeah, I, I'm torn between this as well. I, I on the other hand, I, I think Mr. Kenyon mentioned that if this were a commercial development, the setback would only be twenty-five feet, but because it's residential, it's a hundred? No. I don't have a word.
So, Mr. Jordan, it's actually, the, for residential, it's twenty-five feet. Because it's a multi-household development, it has a hundred.
So, so that said, I, I'll go along with Maria and Joe and say, I think if we could get it. I'll go along with Maria and Joe and say, I think if we could get another unit. You know, but.
Joe?
For clarification, I, I don't have any issue at all with the 100-foot waiver because I think the unique nature and the geometry of the lot, that's not a self-created hardship. So I, that one, I think is, I don't have no issue with. It was the, the 50-foot between, that I think that if there's any reason to request that, what Maria, it would be based on that waiver.
So, can I ask Paul again? I'm sorry. This idea of a self-created hardship. I mean, they chose the lot to build on. So it's, it is a self-created hardship. I mean, I don't know how you can say it's not a self-created hardship. The lot is what it is. If the lot doesn't fit the requirements of the developer, then I guess I don't understand this idea of self-created hardship, and I'm asking for explanation.
Uh, this is Amy. Let me clarify that your interpretation of whether it's self-created would pretty much bar what, a, any development application or any hardship would be self-created. So that's not the correct way to interpret it. The correct way to interpret it would be, other than the purchase of the property by the applicant or the property owner, is the hardship attributable to the land itself or the existing structure? Or is the hardship attributable to something that the applicant did? So just, I, I want to steer you away from focusing on, well, you bought the lot, so you're stuck with it because that interpretation would, would, would make all hardships self-created. Everything that the zoning board reviews would, would be considered a self-created hardship under that rule. So that's too strict and that's not exactly the right way to look at it.
Thank you.
The I guess I'll ask John if, now, if you weren't building two affordable units, you wouldn't have the, you wouldn't need the waiver for the building separations. Am I correct in that assumption?
Um, that's correct, but if I can, if I can just clarify, because Mr. Jordan was correct regarding the standard for var, dimensional variances with the zoning board, that it, it can't be a self-created hardship. The waiver standard for the subdivision regulations is a little different from that. So the, the waiver reg, that standards that you're going under are the waiver or modification is reasonable and within the general purposes and intents of these regulations. And literal enforcement of the regulations is impractical and will exact undue hardship because of peculiar conditions pertaining to the land in question. Or waiver or modification of the regulation is in the best interest of good planning practice or design as evidenced by consistency with the comprehensive community plan and the zoning ordinance. So, I think we meet both those. It's, it's a, or that it's either the peculiar conditions of the land, which this lot, because of the width, it's impossible to meet the 100-foot requirement. And it's also in the best interest of planning and it's consistent with the zoning ordinance. As I stated earlier, the zoning ordinance requires 25-foot setback for residential. It's the multifamily requirement that's 100 feet. The, a, as far as good planning is concerned, we felt that the board would look more favorably on a project like this with smaller dispersed units rather than larger units that maybe could be set further apart, but would have more of a impact on the neighboring properties from a, a scale point of view. So that's the reason for asking for the, the waiver.
Mr. Chairman, if I just may first say, I think, you know, to Mr. Kenyon's point, he's talking about, you know, the, the, the weighing, the undue hardship versus good planning. I think the discussion warrants some merit, but one of the critical things you're missing is, you know, you started out tonight with testimony saying it's a 700-square-foot unit. Now it's a 1,400-square-foot unit. And I think Susan Axelrod made the statement earlier, it would be really nice to see what the buildings looked like so that you could make the determination that not just looking at square boxes and parking areas, you're actually looking at, to Mr. Kenyon's point, what could be determined to be really good planning. But you're missing a part of that built environment, which is the building. Is the building? How does the building relate to the site and the parking and the, the way the garages are facing? You know, Susan Axelrod may be perfectly comfortable with a building that has garages facing the street if the nomenclature of the structures relates to the community, which potentially could support Mr. Kenyon's point that it, the waivers warranted because it equates to really good planning. But I think the couple of board members have stated tonight, they're just, they're missing that additional component of, you know, you're looking at a one-dimensional drawing, making it two, if not three-dimensional, so that you can come to possibly to that conclusion. And I, I think that weighs to Maria Max's point as well as Susan Axelrod. And I think Mr. Jordan, as well as Pamela weighed in on that this evening. That they possibly could come to that conclusion, but all the information isn't there yet. And if I, if I put words in any one of the board members' minds, please feel free to correct me.
So you're asking Jamie if they'll provide some, some sketches of what they envision here?
I, I'm, I'm trying to reiterate some of the comments that the board members had and potentially allowing the board to be able to support Mr. Kenyon's position that this is really good planning. And that that really good planning, which is an evaluation criteria for granting a waiver, is part of the decision-making process for the board members.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, as, as the, the board knows, the architectural review isn't normally performed by the planning board in this type of district and especially not a master plan. But my client, in order to address the, the burden for the waivers, is willing to provide some plan showing these units so that the board could be more comfortable with granting those waivers.
Okay. Susan?
Thank you, Mr. Kenyon.
I'm wondering if there's a answer to Maria's question about whether or not, Mr. Kenyon, you all would consider throwing in an extra affordable unit to make this feel a little more, we could justify maybe better the density.
We do have legal counsel available. And Amy, do weigh in on the discussion of potentially negotiating a waiver by asking the developer to provide something?
This, this is Amy. That kind of negotiation is perfectly legitimate. At the end of the day, if you're approving it and granting the waiver, you need to find that the standards are met. And i- if, if that concession helps the board make that determination, that's perfectly legitimate.
I just want to make sure they were on solid legal ground. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may speak to Susan directly to answer her question. I, I don't want to speak for the, the applicant. And as I've said before with Zoom, he's not sitting right next to me, so I can't whisper to him. So I, I, I would like the opportunity to be able to sit down with him and go over what Spencer just.
Thanks for considering it.
Yeah, I, I think when you come back, you'll have a chance to digest that and see if it's financially supportable.
Yes, and thank you for that consideration as well.
Okay. So I think the board would like to continue this meeting to next month. And ask, ask the applicant to provide some design criteria of the, the units they're going to build. And to discuss the proposals for an additional affordable housing unit. So, is that everything that we talked about or we're unclear at, we want settled at the next meeting?
And they're going to illustrate on the plans, as Josh stated, where the green space versus the impervious areas are, buildings, roofs, and so on. And I would make that motion to continue this until our next meeting, which is February 23rd. Is that correct?
Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
Do we have a second? I have a second from Joe. Pam, will you take a roll on the, the vote, please?
Sure.
Continuation.
Joe Murphy?
Aye.
Maria Mack?
Aye.
Aye.
Paul Jordan?
Aye.
Peter DiStefano?
Aye.
Susan Axelrod?
Aye.
And Pam Rubenoff?
Aye.
Okay, so the motion passes unanimously. We'll see you in February.
Great, thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, thank you. We have one more item on our agenda tonight. Would the board like to take a five-minute break before we start that? Okay.
Sounds good.
I see a couple of hands raised, so we'll see you back in five minutes for our next hearing.
Very good.
Mr. Hallbrook, all right. Your mic was still on.
Hey, Steve, whoever's idea was to put that note up, that was an excellent idea, the, the five-minute break. Really good idea. Let's the public know what's going on.
Now, now they want to do is a countdown clock.
I'm working on it.
Got me thinking of Little Diddy they used to play at the drive-ins. Remember that? Let's go out to the lobby.
You might be dating yourself. Drive-ins haven't been around in a while.
Oh, come on.
What's a drive-in?
Yeah, you're not that young, Jay.
You know, Jay, one time I had some time on my hands and I went around and mapped all the old drive-ins in the state because you can still see them in the LiDAR data. Have a very, to know that, well, you don't know. The ripply surface, right? They're all over the place.
We still have an active drive-in about 10 miles from our house. Two screens. Two screens.
Where's this, Jamie?
In Mans, it's in Mansfield, Connecticut. Just on the Wyndham Town Line.
Because there's still one out on the Cape, you know, the, the summer traffic out there loves a driving.
Well, I think the Mansfield Twin.
The good old days.
146 drive-in no longer working?
You know, I think it is still there.
I, I, I think it's there, but I think there may be plans to get rid of it. But that one's an, an old one. And Jay, you've seen a drive-in. You're not that old. Or young, I should say.
The rustic.
No, he's not that young. Rustic drive-in, thank you. My kids don't know what a drive-in is. My kids don't know what a drive-in is, but we do.
I try, I, I try telling my kids about A and W. Old school A and W.
Out to the car?
Basically, what in Smithfield?
Yeah.
I haven't been up there in a while.
Yeah, yeah.
We used to have a great drive-in in North Kingston, and I, we had a, I learned how to drive in an LTD Country Squire, and had these little flip-up seats in the back, and we used to go to the drive, drive-in all the time. There was one up on, up on, uh, Post Road in North Kingston.
Yeah.
A and W got rid of the roller skates, though.
When you look at that property, Rich, you can still see the fan shape of the new development there. Take a look at the aerial sometime. Stop being a nerd.
Now we get Joe back, we'll, uh, we'll start.
I'm here.
He's here, okay, great, alright. This is a development plan review for advisory to zoning for the Winding Road Compassion Center, a proposed marijuana compassion center. Do we have somebody representing the applicant?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For purposes of the record and, and perhaps to refresh recollections, I'm going to state quickly the names of our project team members again. My name is Christine Angustian. I'm the attorney for the applicant, the Winding Road Compassion Center, Inc. As authorized representatives of the applicant, we have Patrick J. Casey, President. Matthew Wilks, Vice President of Business Operations. Rachel Cross, Vice President of Retail Operations, and Stephen Ford, Security Consultant. Also here this evening is Joseph Casali, Professional Engineer, and Daniel De Cesaris from Joe Casali Engineering, Inc. Paul Bannon, a Traffic Expert at Beta Group, Inc. Dennis Caldwell and Christopher Gonzalez from Dennis Caldwell Architects. Diane Soul, Registered Landscape Architect from Diane C. Soul and Associates. And Edward Pimental, AICP from Pimental Consulting, Inc. As you know, the applicant appeared before you at this board's December twenty-second, two thousand and twenty meeting on its development plan review application, and also for an advisory recommendation to the zoning board on its special use permit application regarding its proposal at six eighty-two Kingston Road. Tonight, it's a continuation of that December twenty-second meeting for those two purposes. At this point, I wish to turn the presentation over to Joseph Casali, who will explain to the board the modifications that the applicant has made to the site plan and the landscaping plan since the December twenty-second meeting, and those modifications were outlined in a letter sent earlier this month from the project engineer to the South Kingston Planning Department. So, Joe, if you, if you wouldn't mind with the presentation.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, just for the record, my name's Joe Casali, I'm a registered professional engineer. Um, offices at three hundred Post Road in Warwick. Um, Jay, may I share my screen so I can go through a quick PowerPoint presentation?
Sure, hold on.
Um. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I hope that, uh, you will see tonight in our presentation, um, we have tried to, and, uh, hopefully conveyed to you, understand all of your comments and all of your questions and concerns. And, uh, I think we have, uh, integrated, um, most if not all of them. Uh, but I'd like to go through them quickly and also at different points of the presentation. We do have Diane Soul here, if we want to drill down a little bit on the landscaping. Um, Rachel Cross is also with us. Rachel is the Vice President of Retail Operations uh, for Aspen LLC, and so she will be able, if we want to drill down a little bit on the internal operations and the COVID procedures, and then also pop in and at the end, um, if there's some follow-up traffic questions. So, if I may, um, one of the, the things I, I know that we heard was um, that we wanted to add some landscaping along that northernmost, uh, piece of frontage on Tower Hill Road, which you can see we've done. We've also, uh, made that area like the other landscape areas that, but Tower Hill Road, um, you know, a drainage, uh, a, a pertinent. So, in terms of the water quality volume, this, uh, being a redevelopment site by DM standards, we would be required to treat fifty percent of the water quality bu- volume. Um, you can see that we are now able to do that as a retrofit, even extending in, um, uh, overreaching a little bit in terms of what we're able to provide for, uh, water quality. And know that, uh, the board and staff also wanted to see a more detailed landscape plan, and I believe, or I know that's been submitted with the package. Um, plant species, heights, uh, perimeter landscaping, and, uh, root barriers. Um, we have also provided additional landscaping, as we talked about in that front area. Um, the species, the type, um, sizes in terms of caliber, uh, is there, and Diane is here to drill down. One of the, um, elements is, the last time we saw you, we were asking for, uh, waivers on three, um, items in your checklist due to the fact that we were able to add some more landscaping along the perimeter, and specifically of that existing building, we were able to alleviate one of the waivers. Um, we tried to get them all, uh, we couldn't, um, but we, we think that we've done in terms of max, maximum extent, are practical. Um, Diane, um, is here with me if there are any questions. Um, one element that I know the board did ask for that we couldn't provide was some landscaping in those interior islands. I just think it's too restrictive in terms of movement and, um, snow plowing, you know, whi- when you have that parking configuration that we have. Um, we think that the perimeter landscaping and then all of the drainage we're able to capture in there, uh, will meet the intent. But, uh, Mr. Chairman, i- i- I can wait till the end, or if not, if there were specific landscape questions, um, Diane is here now, or she can, uh, we can also follow up later.
Uh, board members have any questions of the, uh, landscape architect?
I do.
Go ahead, Maria.
Um, your landscape plan, you have a plant schedule, but you don't have specific, um, you don't have, o- on the plan, you just have shapes or figures rather than a specific identity for the plans. For example, on the, it is very difficult to determine, um, go back to the plan itself on the most, let's see, the narrow strip, the, the narrow strip that has been added, that's, uh, circled by the top of dotted red line that goes to Holly Street, what is that? What plant material is that?
Okay.
It's not listed on the plan.
Yeah, I, I can go through, well, not, not tonight, but, um, a- and identify um, labels for all these plants, um, along this, this strip there that you're talking about.
Uh, the foundation plantings.
Yeah, right. Those are, uh, oxwood.
Okay.
You have green.
Okay, uh, one of my suggestions too, upon just looking at the plant list itself, uh, given the fact that oxwood blight is everywhere, I would suggest that you substitute Alex Cronada Hugendorf, which, as you know, is a Japanese holly. It would be a, um, a very rugged, reasonable substitution for that. Um, and then along the side entrance, is that a gladiatio, or is that a lilac? Again, it's just a symbol, so I'm just guessing, it's, it's one or the other based on symbols down below in the plant schedule.
Uh, that's lilac.
Okay. Um, uh, so, yeah, I, I think that's the extent of, of my questions, other than just wanting to be sure what is actually, um, what the trees are, a little easier to, um, discern, but again, it's just a, um, you have a silhouette, um, sometimes for a few different, um, plant materials rather than label, so labeling, as you know, makes it easier to read the plan.
Yeah, we can go through it, we'll label all the, the plant materials on the plan as well.
Thank you.
Okay, so Maria, overall, you're happy with, uh, what they presented?
Uh, it's an improvement, for sure.
Okay, thank you. And if there are any substitutions, Mr. Chairman, um, you know, the applicant is, is here, uh, to agree to it and it, and is open to that. Okay, uh, any other board members have comments on the landscaping? I can't see you all very easily, so if you might want to speak up. Oh, Susan, go ahead.
Thank you, Steve. Um, I just have a question. I don't know if the question's about landscaping, but along, um, Kingston Road, right now, there's a sort of ratty-looking wooden guardrail. Are you working around that guardrail? Are you replacing that guardrail, or are you removing that guardrail?
I believe that guardrail is within the DOT right-of-way, um. Diane, do you have that survey? I believe, Susan, that, that guardrail is in the DOT right-of-way, and we were not proposing, uh, removal and replacement of it.
So you're, so your landscaping is on the interior of budding that guardrail?
Yes, it's interior to the property line, and I want to see if I can find a survey. I cannot, but, um,
Oh, I have the survey up. The guardrail is not shown on the, on the survey.
But it's, um, I thought it was on our site plan. Well, regardless, we will, um, locate that guardrail, but there are, there were no plans to remove and replace it.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions from board members on landscaping? Alright, hearing none. Why don't we continue, mister?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, um. So, in terms also of the trash receptacles, um, we've located where that, um, small, uh, you know, three, four, five-yard dumpster is going to be located in the rear of the building. We're also permitted, um, to fence enclosure, in a, in opaque fence enclosure, whether it's something like this, that's, uh, cedar, uh, whether it's vinyl fencing or even chain link with the privacy slats in it, um, just so that the dumpster would be hidden from, uh, from regular view. Um, in terms of Dale Collier Street, um, just to reiterate, from last time, uh, we have agreed and shown on the plan the continuation of the sidewalk. Um, so now that we can have pedestrian movement from Tower Hill Road along that sidewalk right along up to Holly Street. Um, in terms of traffic flow, uh, and tra- and pavement markings, uh, I don't know that we were clear last time in showing them on the plans. Um, Jamie, this is what we have in terms of stop bars at the parking fields, um, and also the double, um, yellow lines, um, and the stop bars at the more formalized intersections, as well as some pavement markings, um, with the town's approval to freshen up that intersection at Dale College Street. Um, we've also put in, uh, in addition, crosswalk, um, we noticed through the design process that, um, patrons and pedestrians in that northernmost field um, don't have a safe way to the frontage, front doors of the facilities, and so we were able to easily put in a, um, a crosswalk, yeah. Um, man, in terms of the, um, you know, handicap accessible parking, um, I'm in receipt of the town comments. Uh, I think it, this was our second iteration that we had proposed that these parking spaces, uh, be located closer to the building. I think that was a derivative of our first, uh, TRC meeting with staff. There are multiple locations, and I'd like to facilitate the discussion with the board. We can certainly put the handicap spaces at the southern property line. Um, we lose, uh, three regular spaces, uh, because of the striping, and we can also, um, um, you know, opposite of where we have the others. Um, this will, will be a reduction of, of four spaces. Um, so at this time, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to maybe stop here, and, um, if we wanted to discuss this further, um, the applicant, uh, you know, really concedes to any and all of those locations, um, if they make the most sense. Yes, I, I was reading your notes, and, uh, when you opened, if we're still in the COVID situation, how many customers would be allowed in the store at once? Um, I'm gonna, um, not evade you, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna punt that one to Rachel Cross, if you'll give me a second and a couple more slides. Alright, the reason I'm asking is because if, uh, the handicap remained where the town, or TRC had suggested, I wonder if that would encumber that, that line that might be forming outside of the, uh, the building. Yeah, um, well, then, why don't we, um, I'll keep proceeding, we'll get, um, to Ms. Cross. I, I think you're gonna see that, um, you know, we don't, we're gonna be able to control and alleviate any type of line through not only our operations, but, but our technology. Okay. Um, so, if I may, um, in terms of the police detail, um, you know, you asked us to consider engaging an, an officer, um, and that we, we stipulate and agree to that for an unespaced amount of, amount of time, um, to mitigate, um, you know, any concern. Um, so, we have owner here, we also have members of our security team. Um, so, we understand it's going to be the first month of operations, and then initially, we're going to leave it in the town scan. Um, however long you think that i- it deems necessary, um, after that initial month for the police detail. Uh, and then I think, um, in terms of what, uh, Rachel, uh, this is a good time now for you to step in. Um, in terms of the board's questions, uh, I think predominantly they have, you know, as we talked, the internal operations, and as you speak, I'll try to narrate, um, through the PowerPoint for you.
On me, myself. Um, hi, I'm Rachel. Um, so in regards to
Please state your full name, please, and profession.
Yeah, uh, my name is Rachel Cross. I'm the VP of Retail Operations with the, uh, Winding Road Compassion Center. Um, so to address your question in regards to how many people will be in the actual compassion center at once with COVID implementations, um, on the presentation here, you see registers that are scattered throughout the sales floor. This is the white area. Yep, the retail, it just lit up, so essentially every other, um, station will be available. We will have order-ahead kiosks, um, at one, two, and three. So, when implementing COVID, um, social distancing, um, number two would be available for use. Um, four, five, six, and seven are express registers, so patients have the option to place their orders online, um, using a software called Dutchy. Um, this software allows us to control and, um, schedule the amount of pickups that we have in the, uh, the compassion center at once. This will essentially allow us to alleviate the heavy traffic hours, um, that patients would normally come to pick up their products and spread it out throughout a regular business day. Um, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen as well are available, um, and they are along with every other, so nine, eleven, and thirteen. So essentially, eight or so patients will be in the actual compassion center at once, um, with small area for waiting room.
And, so Rachel, I just, um, we believe, Mr. Chairman, that those spots can, uh, those handicap spaces can be located adjacent to the building. Um, you can see how it's broken down that, you know, you, you have the typical retail consumer or customer that will come in and possibly look around and, and buy on demand, but from the, the facilities that they're running in Massachusetts, there are also other ways, um, in terms of they find that, and Rachel, correct me if I'm wrong, there's a lot of online ordering. People seem to be ordering the same thing on a routine basis, and it's done through the website, and then it's really just and it's done through the website, and then it's really just there to pick up, and they have their own kiosk for that. Um, but also the Dutchy software is something very interesting. Um, I equate it, I tried to dumb it down and think of it like a Disney Fastpass, where in essence, they're giving you a reservation to come back to the store at a certain amount of time and to be called in from your car. Um, and then they're also, you know, designated different kiosks for that. So you can see with the technology of the Dutchy software and the online platform, um, when we look at the numbers in terms of retail, you know, they're not all that same type of of consumer that just walks into the door, and now, you know, we have 40 people in a COVID situation stuck in our on our retail floor.
It was another solution to control the amount of traffic in and out of the compassion center at one given time, being that we've evaluate evaluated some peak hours, not only from the traffic studies, but just from experience working with Massachusetts dispensaries. Um, there are times throughout the business day where there is elevated numbers of consumers coming into the actual collection center. So the Dutchy system essentially allows them to view the products that are available and place their order online without having to actually come into the compassion center itself. Employees will still verify their identity and check them in in the same manner. It just expedites the process.
Thank you.
Steve, this is Joe. Can I do a quick question? Um, well, one thing, I think the reason why I don't have a video, when I clicked on my start video, it says the host is turning me off, so I don't know if Jay can turn me on or not. Uh, but my question is for Joe, the engineer. Joe, can you point out the the exits and the path of egress? I just want to make sure with the secured hallways and rooms that, you know, we have plenty of egress.
Yeah, so we have, um, this is the entry and exit. Um, and that's where, you know, your ID is checked and you go through security. And then ultimately, in this green area, that's the only area that retail is allowed. There is a public restroom, but other than that, you then exit through that same entry point. So it's a combined ingress egress. And the secure hallway and the delivery, that's in the back of the building. It goes down, you know, to the to the bottom floor. Can you see that? Okay, does that make sense?
Um, I'm sorry, I missed it a little bit. I see that the main entrance.
Yeah, so we have
Where's the second exit? Or where is there additional exit?
Um, so in turn, there there is no, um, you mean for for fire?
For a fire, for any type of emergency, common path of travel, all those, all those issues.
So in terms of, you know, you have multiple ingress and egress points on the building, you have this front exit, and then you also have the rear exit. So there are your two points of ingress and egress.
So that second one, the yellow one here, um, that is, um, that's accessible. That's not secured or locked.
Um, you know, why don't I, um, let me try, uh, I didn't, let's try it from. So I had presented this at the last time. Joe, can you see this? Okay?
I can.
All right, so that is our, um, that is our only entry and exit in terms of security. That's your secure ID check-in. That's where the security team will verify. Then that is the only area in terms of retail that a patron is allowed to matriculate through the building. There's one other area, excuse me, which is that public restroom. Um, in terms of the liveries, that's in the back of the building. Um, this is downstairs. That's the basement side. Um, that is packaging as well as this other pink area. Um, we have a couple of vaults in the basement. One is for cash and one is for product. Um, we also have security offices in both the basement, and we have managerial offices on the first floor. We have a dedicated staff break room, dedicated employee restrooms. Um, and these are some of the improvements we were doing in terms of the exterior wall. We had to infill windows.
I mean, I'm sure you thought this out, but I I still can't see
Joe, can I, this is Dennis Caldwell.
Yes, thank you, Dennis. Dennis, that's okay, registered architect. Dennis, go ahead.
So your question regarding egress by by Rhode Island State Building Code, one, one means of egress within that space is acceptable. Our occupant load within the retail space will be under 50, and the common path of travel is less than 75 feet. So that, I think that's more what you're asking.
Pieces of sprinkler. I said, is the building, does the building have sprinklers?
No.
And the common path of travel 75, not 25? That's the distance to the exit, or is that common path of travel?
Common path.
Okay, well, I'm sure you'll have to get it through the fire department for that.
Yeah, it'll have to go through building department, and obviously, these are, these are preliminary plans, but we'd go through a code review analysis as well. Everything would be have to be certified, but as far as life safety goes, we'll ensure that that is all.
All right, because my understanding is the common path of travel is, all right, because my understanding of common path of travel, I haven't done this in a while, but with 75 feet for a sprinkle building, but it's less than that for a non-sprinkle building, but I'm sure you go through that review.
Okay.
And can you just show us where, again, maybe you already did this, where the people would wait if there were already people at their stations, especially during COVID, you know, where where there's less people allowed in the building?
Yeah, I can touch on that. Um, so in this area, right beyond the secure entry, there, there's a small area here, yep, where the cursor is. That's an area where two patients can stand and wait to actually go up to a register to speak with an employee or place an order on one of the kiosks. Um, and that is implementing the social distancing spacing of two patrons.
And do you have any potential consideration if there happens to be more people that would be outside the building?
That is a part of why we are implementing the order ahead system. Um, it's also a piece of the education that we're going to be working with the patients on, basically just speaking with them on the benefit of ordering ahead so that we alleviate any type of significant lines that would be formulating outside of the compassion center itself. That is a piece that we're trying to avoid. Um, that the Dutchy order ahead, it allows us to schedule out pickup times so that there won't be the significant lines outside of the compassion center. Um, the employees that we have present in the actual compassion center as well, we have positions set aside to expedite the process. So people that are there filling orders, people that are there actually communicating and interacting with patients, and people that are there ensuring the inventory is available. So all of the positions have a purpose to ensure the entire system flows in an even manner, and people get in and out of the compassion center in a reasonable amount of time.
Um, I'd like to add on to what Pam just asked. Um, despite the process for your online ordering, I do not see a sufficiently rigorous standard that you are using to prevent people lining up in a very busy congested parking lot outside standing in the line or what have you.
Yeah, we, through the traffic study, we've established that the peak hour, we would see 40 visits. Throughout the breakdown of how many POS stations we've had in company with the actual order head system, it should alleviate the majority of those lines outside of the compassion center.
And I don't, I don't think those lines are beneficial to any business, and I think through through technology, I think everyone is trying to eliminate that. Um, we see it from the food industry right through retail.
And the trends in Massachusetts are following. We're seeing most people looking to place their orders ahead of time, not actual in, not actually inside of the compassion center itself. Most people are looking to place their orders online prior to arriving. Um, so assuming that trends will follow just as easily down there, people are going to look to place their orders online rather than in person.
This is Susan. Can I ask a couple of questions?
Go ahead, Susan.
Thank you. Um, there's a dumpster out back that specifically says on your plan, no medical marijuana product or related items in that dumpster. Is medical marijuana product typically waste that you generate and therefore have a different method of disposing of things that don't belong in the dumpster?
Rachel, so what is the, um, you know, what what is permitted to be in that dumpster? And then what do we do with the medical, if there is any medical waste?
There is a procedure. It's a destruction procedure. Um, so essentially, the product is ground down with product. Let's say soil is a common item. Kitty litter is something that can be used. The product is essentially ground down to the point where it's unrecognizable within trash bags and things of that nature. So product won't be directly thrown into the trash can on its own. Um, it'll be destroyed in a proper manner.
And so what do we expect in this trash receptacle in terms of this dumpster? Is this normal, just everyday waste from the kitchen and and the restrooms?
Correct, yes.
So we just, we wanted to stress to the to the community, um, that, you know, you're not going to find um, discarded medical marijuana that, you know, someone, a child could get in that dumpster and all of a sudden interface with that. We're, uh, we just wanted to be specific about that. It's excellent.
Okay, thank you. Um, I have another question. Based on the nature of your of your business, that it's a medical marijuana, it looks like you have two dedicated handicap parking spaces. Is that adequate if your clientele might be of a medically, you know, is is two handicapped parking spots enough if you're servicing folks that have medical needs?
You know, so, um, fair question. Um, according to the American with Disabilities Act, um, yes, there it's based on the number of parking spaces, not on the use that they serve. But any responsible designer understands um, that certain uses, say a senior center, um, may require more handicap spaces. To one of the improvements of this site is that there are only two handicap spaces that exist in that parking field today. Um, code requires five. We're providing six. Um, it would be easy enough for us right there to provide each of them if you think it would be necessary. In my experience, um, I don't think that this use warrants on the handicap spaces, but if it's the community, i- if if the wishes, um, we can easily put a couple more spaces there, and now have eight spaces of which five are required by the federal code.
And I guess you know your clientele better than we do, but, you know, it seems to me that this use would be different than, say, how many spaces you would need in front of a sandwich shop. You know what I'm saying?
It's fair, but, um, let's take the CVS next door. Um, that's a pharmacy. Um, and there are no more additional handicap spaces there. And one would think, being next to a pharmacy, there would be a requirement of much more. In essence, that's medicine as as this is.
Just, um, sorry, excuse me, Dennis here again, Caldwell. Um, so yeah, so the only misnomer is although it's medical or medicinal marijuana, um, not every patient is going to be handicapped or disabled, um, you know, in a wheelchair or on crutches. Some of the disabilities or the medical use would be anxiety or arthritis, et cetera, things of that nature. So they're not all medical use for, you know, a disability, let's say.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thanks.
Joe, may I inter- interject?
Yeah, of course, Steve.
This is Steve Ford on the security person for Winding Road. Um, I have previous experience working in the Providence Rhode Island um, compassion center, and we've dealt with this type of issue before, and what we ended up doing, we maintained two wheelchairs inside our facility. And as a patient was coming up, either to be dropped off or, you know, left out, we would be able to have one of our personnel, either our security person, to come out with a wheelchair and assist bringing that person in to be able to make their purchase. So I've, we have dealt with that in the past. I've dealt with it, and that worked out perfectly well.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Jamie Rabbit, Planning Director, can I just?
Yes, Jamie.
Just one statement. Um, this is to Mr. Casali with regards to the statement in the planning department's report. Joe, what we're really looking for in that statement is a minimum of a two-car stack at that stop sign without a conflict with the handicap spaces. So we're relatively comfortable with them in front of the building, but with them pushed, we'll call it to the left, that really only gave you a one-car stack before the turning movements of those vehicles in those spaces started to conflict with a car at that stop bar. So if we had two and maybe preferably three, our comment was, could those just slide to the right?
Um, yes, they absolutely can. Um, we just heard comments from the board at the last meeting about the outdoor dining at the Thai restaurant, and we did not want to encumber them any more than they probably already are with with COVID and the like. But they certainly can slide to the right a little bit if if the town so wishes.
I wanted to make sure we didn't lose something in translation between what we intended in our comments and what you were trying to accomplish.
Yeah, no, thank you, because I misinterpreted that. I I thought that you didn't want them there, and that's why we looked at altered locations.
May I add something else about the handicap spots, Joe? I, uh, even though it's all an existing parking lot, um, they still have to, I believe, they would still have to comport with the requirements of, you know, no greater than 2% cross slope and all of that. You know, I think that bringing them down into the parking lot, I don't know that you're going to be possible doing that just because of the existing slopes there up close to the building, but let's be sure that any future plans, when you start really laying down, you know, some site work on it, that it shows that, you know, it's got to meet those requirements.
Yeah, and I, I mean, we will meet, you know, obviously, we can't have that space if we don't meet the 2% ADA code. Um, I know that we'll meet it it to that building. Um, and I think the spaces we've shown, Rich, um, I don't have a class three, but, you know, are within the tolerances.
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't take much to figure out what that that grade really is there, but it may require that some of that asphalt's cut out and it's brought up a little, you know, a little differently, but that's normally the way you would do it if you were introducing new new ADA compliance spaces.
Sure. Any other questions from board members in regards to the parking? Or egress? Into the building? Right, go ahead, Mr. Sally. Mr. Chairman, this is my, um, this is the last slide in the presentation. Um, I just, I knew there was some, um, you know, we had a lot of discussion last time in terms of traffic. Paul Bannon is here with us tonight. If there are follow-up questions or anything in terms of, uh, concerns, Paul is is here to answer them to the best of his ability. Okay. Did he want to?
This is, sorry, this is Susan. Can I ask one more question?
Yes, of course.
Um, on the zoning ordinance, it looks like Article Five states that the hours of operation for a marijuana retail facility shall be limited from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. The staff schedule, the example schedule you gave us, says you guys The staff schedule, the example schedule you gave us says you guys are open till 10? Is that?
That's a mistake on our part. We obviously will comport to, um, the zoning requirements of hours. I, I think that, that's a real schedule, but it came from our Massa- one of our Massachusetts facilities.
Thanks.
Welcome.
Mr. Bannon, did you want to go over the comments, uh, the board made at the last meeting in regards to the traffic law?
I, I believe, uh, Joe, who has, um, you know, gone over the, the changes that we've made, um, to the, to the parking in, um, relative to the traffic. I don't know if there are any specific question, further questions, uh, I'd be, be glad to answer.
All right. Did the board members have any questions for Mr. Bannon? It doesn't look like anybody's raised their hand. Uh, staff, have any comments on the traffic?
Um, no, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, Mr. Sally, did you have anything else to present?
I don't, Mr. Chairman, unless there were questions, um, you know, I, I, I believe that we've captured, at least it was our intent to capture your concerns and address, um, really everyone that, that we can. Um, I don't know if there are anything else, uh, that we may have missed or that you think could be updated. Uh, but if not, uh, I, we're, we're going to rest at this point in terms of presentation. Um, we're out of witnesses, so to speak.
Okay. Um, we have three attendees in the audience. Uh, did you have any questions of the applicant? Or the application they've presented to the board? If you do, please raise your hand. All right, I don't see any raised hands. Any discussion by the board on what's been presented tonight? Uh, Susan?
Um, so I just have a question about the parking lot. And I think this was something mentioned by Paul at our last meeting. That the entrance from, um, Kingstown Road into the lot funnels the cars into that sort of pedestrian walkway right in front of the job lot and the sandwich shop and the appliance store. As opposed to where it is, I mean, it's not a great design now, but at least you enter into the back of the parking lot, park your car and get out and you never drive across that pedestrian pathway. I, a little worried, and I think Paul, it was Paul the last time, who was a little worried that all cars will funnel right into the space, right in front of the front door of the job lot. And whether or not that is a safety concern. It's a basically a straight shot from the top of that entrance to that exit at Dale Carlia. And I'm a little worried that folks are just going to fly right on the front of those buildings because of the way this is designed. And if that's and if that's been considered and if that's the way it needs to be, it needs to be, but is there a way to make it safer for pedestrians in that parking lot?
It's Paul Bannon. Uh, we went through that with, with the TRC and that's how we came up with the reconfiguration of the parking lot. There really isn't a, um, an aisle that runs today along Route 108. So that's what we did. We created the aisle in the parking spaces along Route 108 to pull the traffic away from the building. So you come in and you turn down an aisle, turn down that pretty much first aisle to then look for parking spaces. Cause those, those, um, you know, spaces, that's right in front of the, um, the job lot. So, you know, those spaces in, in the, uh, parking carriage, um, corral, uh, or would be occupied spaces. So the, the most open spaces would be along Route 108 in that, um, would pull the, the, the traffic to the, the main or primary parking spaces.
Yeah. So Jay, I don't know, um, if, if you have an aerial showing, um, the, the, the spaces as they are today. And it's why I think Paul, um, what, uh, one of the things that was accomplished was, thank you, uh, was the restriping to try, you know, to the maximum extent, pull those cars away from that building and, and keep, you know, this is an older shopping center. It's unique in that it, it has the, you know, it's fronted on three streets. Um, and therefore that building is, is where it is in that entrance. So while it's pulled away from the intersection of Kingston Road where we want it, you know, one of the concessions is that it's, it's, it's in right where that pedestrian travel way is. So with signage, striping and then restriping that lot, um, you know, we, I, I think we've made it much better.
And, and what you, what, back to that. What you see here is if someone pulls in the driveway and they goes up an aisle and there's no parking spaces, they have to go to the front and circulate and, and then to the back and then keep circulating. With our design, they don't have to do that. If those spaces are occupied, they can stay right down along Route 108 and access those, those spaces where, um, under current, it's very difficult. There's not really much room down there. So we have a, a wide aisle down by the road to, um, to have those people go north, south within the lot versus having to go up and down, up and down, which they do today. Would, they have to go to the front, they go to the back, they have to go to the front, go to the back, looking for a parking space. Where under our design, they could stay away from the building along the street to find the, the available. The major amount of parking spaces within the lot.
This is Paul, if I could just, Paul Jordan, if I could just comment for a second.
Go ahead, Paul.
Um, I did, Susan, um, make a point over the last couple of weeks of swinging by there different times of the day, but certainly if I was in the area during peak hours, looking at the traffic in front of Job Lot and, um, whatever reason, it wasn't as bad as I imagined it to be. Uh, maybe Job Lot isn't as popular at Benny's. But I also think that closing that, where they're closing that entrance, um, in front. I think I'm satisfied that, that, you know, everything that, that can be done has been done with this. I certainly didn't see anybody speeding in front of those stores. Traffic that I did see there. So I, I think I'm happy with it.
I, I agree with Paul. This is Steve, that the eliminating one of those entrances, especially because they were so close together. There's a lot less confusion, uh, and people crossing through that parking lot to get to the various exits. So I think it's with, with the landscaping and the layout, it's a vast improvement of the existing, uh, parking situation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If we have no further comments from board members, um, staff as per, oh, Joe, I'm sorry.
I, I just want to, um, compliment the team on both the presentation and on the final project, project.
Thank you.
Okay.
It's in a, one area in the side of the town and I feel like they've want to bump beyond to meet our requirements and improve that lot. So, um, I just want.
Yeah, like I said, it's, uh, it'll provide a little greenery in that sea of asphalt. So it's, it's nice to see. Maria, did you have a comment?
Yes, I, I agree with what Joe said. I think there has been, um, quite a bit of work and effort and improvement made to the site plan. Um, however, there are some things that I would like to see with regard to findings and conditions added to the motion.
Okay.
And I'm going to need Amy's help on this as well. So in terms of finding, I, I feel that it's important for us to state that if this applicant, uh, does receive their state approval, that it will be serving the following communities. I believe the total is seven, but I'm not sure. South Kingston, Westerly, Exeter, Charlestown, Richmond, Narragansett, and I feel like I'm leaving one out. I think that should be stated. Second finding or additional finding is, is a statement that the site has multiple commercial uses that are heavily utilized with a significant, um, seasonal impact. Third findings would reference Kingstown Road similarly in that it has a, um, significant traffic impact. Particularly, um, pronounced in, uh, in seasonal congestion. Then I would, uh, suggest that under conditions, the planning board reserves the right to modify, um, or revisit this plan. Should the, um, impacts of exceed expectations in terms of both parking lot and traffic? And perhaps Rich can, um, give me some better language. And then the other condition that I would suggest would be that, certainly post-COVID distancing, there should be no lines in the parking lot. And it's up to the applicant to make sure that that does not happen. I don't think it's safe. Um, and I don't think it's appropriate for people to be standing in a parking lot that busy because of course, right now it is, is not, does not represent normal conditions. Um, I think everyone who lives in this area knows how busy that parking lot is, particularly, uh, with a job lot in the building now.
Maria, did you say post-COVID conditions?
Yes, post-COVID distancing conditions. I mean, I would rather not see anybody lined up in the parking lot even now. And again, maybe that can be. I just think.
I'm asking only because driving by the one in Portsmouth, there are occasions you see a line outside there. Now granted, there's only three in the state right now.
Right.
Um, but, um, in regards to their suggestion of having a police officer there, would that mitigate some of that or?
I think that will help traffic in and out, but it's not going to prevent a line of people standing in that parking lot.
Well, I meant a, a officer in front of the, or where that line is in front of the store.
This is Paul. Can that line be wrapped around the side of the building on, uh, Dale Carlia Street? Cause aren't they, they're doing away with the parallel parking spaces, right? Yeah. So it looks like there's space there on the sidewalk. I would think it would be up to their internal security to just direct people around the side of the building if there's a line forming. But certainly Maria, if you want that to be a condition, I don't have the objection of that.
I guess, what's the, I just need some clarity on the line forming, uh, like what would the condition be?
Well, after COVID, they would be able to stack more people inside the building, I would, I would think. If there's no COVID restrictions.
Well, I guess it's a question for the applicant then. Are they comfortable with having their security staff direct? When they see a line forming, directing them around the side of the building?
It takes a very pragmatic approach, of course. Um, that would be fun.
Mr. Chairman, this is Matthew Wilks, uh, Vice President, Business Operations for Winding Road.
Thank you.
What we could do is we could definitely, um, instruct the personnel who are working in the store to, uh, direct our patients to the website and have them try to wait in their cars until the numbers called through the, through the, uh, through the website. I think that could help mitigate the, uh, the queuing outside the store.
Maybe we could, uh, modify your suggestion to, uh, having to put in language in the conditions of approval that they, have some plan to, uh, either what he just mentioned as far as them waiting in the cars or staff to monitor that line. Satisfy your?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have Jamie Rabbit, Planning Director. I have some potential language. Again, I I would equate this to, you know, if it was restaurant and the restaurant was successful, they may have patients and there's a changeover. And on occasion, there's a line outside of, of a restaurant and I think you all can appreciate that because there are a number of restaurants who are successful in South Kingston. Whether occasionally a line at the podium where you can get into the restaurant. But the applicants shall provide a pedestrian stacking plan for more than, no more than four individuals and provide measures to prevent additional stacking from occurring. And we could potentially eliminate the number, but basically I'd put a number in there in essence for discussion purposes, but also so they can develop a plan around X.
Okay.
That sounds reasonable.
Mr. Chairman? Hi, this is Steve, Security Consultant.
Yes, Steve.
We are, we're going to have a third uniformed security officer that's going to be assigned to the parking lot. Um, that would certainly come under his purview. You know, monitoring and, and placing the lines, um, wherever we, we deem fit to keep, keep it safe and, and, you know, spaced accordingly during, uh, COVID times. So, um, I think we've, we foresaw that problem and I think our third security officer would be able to, uh, certainly train and, and show our clients where and how to line up if, if that's needed.
Um, it's my understanding that the security, uh, the number of security officers will not be, um, will just be temporary in nature? Or is that ongoing?
No, uh, we propose to have three uniformed security office, officers, two inside, one outside, and we're also going to have a manager or, um, supervisor who's, uh, going to be overseeing the security operations of the whole, uh, building and obviously the, uh, officers under his, uh, under his command. So.
But based on that fact, they would be able to comply with the condition that Jamie articulated.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Steve, just to, uh, that is in addition, um, to the uniformed police officer full-time during the first month of operations.
Yes, we would work with not only the town, but the police chief, Chief Ewing Chow and, um, have any officer be on the property itself. Um, if that's needed right in front for high visibility or actually out in the roadway, um, moving cars. So, uh, we can, you know, at the beginning startup, we can, we can get people in and out in a more efficient and safe way.
So it's the town, just, I just want to be clear, it's the town's police officer that will be there for the initial month. And then as long as the community deems necessary, along with your three personnel and then, uh, in perpetuity, your three personnel will remain.
That's correct. Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I do have suggested language for, to solidify that.
Okay.
Um, and again, it's intended, just bear with me. Cooperate. The applicant will provide a uniform officer for purposes of traffic control for the first month of operation. The applicant will continue to provide a uniform officer for traffic control upon the request of the South Kingston Police, Police Chief, who shall consult with the town engineer and director of public service on the need for such officer.
And Jamie, did you have, uh, were you able to add the language to, uh, the conditions, conditions of approval that Maria suggested?
And that? Um, I'm working on that. I have a couple more if I can just read through those before I work on the wording quickly for Maria.
Okay.
Um, and this is based on discussion throughout the process. The applicant shall incorporate architectural treatments to the southern elevation in order to break up the long wall and create a street presence slash feel. This could be accomplished with faux windows and/or trellis arbor landscape feature with wisteria type vines, et cetera. The applicant shall modify the proposed handicap parking spaces in front of the proposed front door by moving them to the north slash right of their proposed location. Movement of these spaces to the right will allow additional queuing space at the post-stop bar slash exit aisle without conflicting with the turning movements into the spaces, so long as the relocation does not affect site distances to the northeast around the building. Again, the applicant will provide a uniform officer for purposes of traffic control for the first month of operation. The applicant will continue to provide a uniform officer for traffic control upon the request of the South Kingston Police Chief, who shall consult with the town engineer and director of public service on the need for such officer. The applicant will modify their proposed hours of operation to be consistent with the requirements of the town's stated hours. The applicant shall provide a pedestrian stacking plan for no more than four individuals and provide measures to prevent additional stacking from occurring. Um, if you give me a moment.
That gives us how many conditions of approval?
That I will incorporate the and again, I may need some help from Amy with regards to the planning board reserves the right to revisit the site of traffic. I don't know if, if Mrs. Mack feels that the consultation with the police chief will satisfy that?
Um, I think that, uh, in our last meeting, uh, DPA- Um, I think that in our last meeting, DPS had some language relative to that point. Rich, do you, can you help us out?
And my point, just my point would be, it would be very cost effective for them to make revisions to their parking lot or flow or add speed, you know, tabletops or something versus have a uniformed officer there during their hours of operation. So I think that comment in and of itself is an incentive for the applicant to address any traffic conditions that exist. Otherwise, policing powers would require that officer.
So would that give them the option of coming back on their own to eliminate that officer? Is that what you're saying?
To eliminate that officer.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't mind that.
Again, I, I suggested an item to address that. I don't know if she feels that she's comfortable with that.
Um, well, there's, there's internal circulation issues and then traffic issues that may increase significantly, which is why I'd ask Rich if he had any language relative to that, which I believe you expressed at the last meeting.
I, I, I don't know. Where are we talking about an officer being? Like, where is he going to be? I mean, I don't think that he's going to go out at the end of Dale Collier Street there and he's going to stand there because it's, you know, it's, I mean, literally five lanes of traffic. I'm just not sure where traffic officers, officers are going to stand. I mean, I'm just, I, what, what I've said all along on this is that it just, it's, it's something that would be nice to be able to revisit town staff perhaps, to be able to revisit the issue and, and talk to the, you know, the, the owners of this facility to discuss perhaps maybe mitigating measures that can happen. I just, I mean, the, the officer sounds like a great idea and I know it has worked in other places, but where I've seen it, you know, particularly in Providence, I've seen it used in Providence. But, you know, Corolla Street is just, it's two lanes with, with, with parking lanes on either side. It's, it's a very different setup as is, you know, as, you know, compared to 108. 108 is, is five lanes. You know, I don't know that a, a police officer is going to go out in the middle of five lanes and stop traffic so somebody can take a left-hand turn out of Dale Collier. So I'm just not sure how that works.
Rich, does the town have any mechanism in the case of bad traffic flow or parking issues after the fact?
We can talk to.
Inspector or anybody?
Um, no, we, we don't have a mechanism, you know, there's no, there's no, you know, way to cite the, cite the problem. There's not going to be, but if there's, if there's a decision that allows us to go back and, and have those discussions, that's not to say that we can request anything specific. I don't know that that can happen, but I just want to be able to keep the dialogue open, you know, and it can involve the planning department and the building official and everybody. But, um, you know, I'm just not sure how it operates. I know that, that Sue, I believe, brought up the, that, that little Dale, Dale Collier Road. Getting out of there is going to be tough. And it's not, it's not really, what, what I'm worried about is that, excuse me, if people, if people are insistent on using it, if, if people decide to, to do what would be logical to me would be to go out even the back way, you know, Holly Street, and to exit out that way would be the easiest way, I think. But even if they were to use the other entrance, at least you'll have, I think there might even be a, this, it's, it's easily, it's easier to get out over there. If you ever leave in Dragon, leaving Dragon Palace or one of those other businesses, Midas or anything like that, it's much easier to get out a little further away. Uh, but if, but if people are insistent on using that Dale Collier, it could be a problem down the line, but it's hard to say what people's habits are going to be. I don't know what they. And it'd be just nice to visit it later on. I'm not sure how that happens, frankly.
Rich, what about a no-left turn sign coming out of there?
I mean, that would make sense.
It doesn't work at CVS.
But yeah, there are other businesses, there are other businesses to think about. And maybe, you know what, Paul, it's an excellent point, and that'd be something I have to discuss with Highway Department, but the Highway and then John Shock as well. So I, I really can't say if that's something we can just kind of make automatic. That would be something that we'd really have to review. It's, it's, it's a good point, though, but, but, but then how do you stop it from happening? So now they're, they're putting in an island and they're, and they're forcing all, every vehicle to go right. And then, you know, people aren't doing that and it just ends up being a problem anyways. But you're right, it would be, it would make sense.
CVS on Main Street is supposed to take a right out of that, but people take a left, they cross Delmont. So it's, it's, it doesn't really have any enforcement. Uh, Jay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is Jay Parker. To Maria's point earlier, at the TRC meeting in November, there is an item listed on traffic that states that the applicant should consider post-construction traffic analysis in review to determine if additional traffic safety measures are required. I'm not sure if that's what Ms. Mack was referring to.
Sounds like it would meet her.
Good language.
Yeah.
Um, and two, two additional points. This is development plan review advisory to zoning. So they do have to go to the zoning board for the special use permit. If conditions could be suggested to the zoning board, which would may, may lead to being the trigger mechanism to deal with any traffic problems that may occur based on that condition. Now, my final question would be to Mark Hadden, who is sitting as counsel on this application. Mark, does the, should there be an effort for the conditions suggested by the planning board to be incorporated by the zoning board specifically? Or does the DPR decision itself carry enough weight to have those conditions addressed?
Thank you, Jay. I had, I muted. Yeah, your, your, your point is right on. This is advisory to the zoning board. So the zoning board can review your decision and accept it or not accept it and basically make their own decision. I think probably the best way to deal with it is that this board, this planning board recommends that the development plan review decision contain some sort of provision like that that would afford them some flexibility. How far you can go is probably a very gray area. And that decision can be made at that time. But at this point, there's really nothing that you say that is going to be perfectly binding because your decision is an advisory one with respect to the, the SUP that the zoning board has to decide on.
Um, thank you, Mr. Hadden. And I think we have learned from experience that it's better to be more thorough than less thorough. That's the reason for, and I didn't realize that Amy disappeared and you just popped up. I just realized.
Okay. Lucky for her, we don't look anything alike. See, I spoke to, to Amy before she left and she's, you know, she's not going to be around for your last items either. So I'll, I'll hang in there in case you need something. But, and, but basically, there's nothing wrong with you adding whatever conditions that you want or you think are advisable. You've spent quite a good amount of time reviewing this. And by the time it gets to the zoning board, they're going to be very appreciative that you took that time and you took that thought and made your recommendations. And they will definitely give her, give it a lot of consideration based upon what you've done. But it's, again, it's not binding on them and they can either make their decision more restrictive or less restrictive or whatever. They have to make that ultimate determination that an SUP is advisable. And they have to go over the same, you know, general checklist of, of items, comprehensive plan, et cetera, et cetera, that, that you do. So it's, whatever you do, feel, however you believe it should be going, feel free to put that in the decision and they'll, they'll consider that.
Thank you.
Jamie, how are you making out on that amendments to the motion?
What I do is with regards to the findings, facility is designed to communities of, and we would list them. Uh, the center is home to a multitude of commercial uses subject to seasonal shifts in patronage. And the area is impacted by seasonal shifts in traffic. Patterns.
Okay.
Jamie, can I add another one? I, I don't know if this is inferred by some of the others, but I know we've talked in the past about the change in use from medicinal to recreational. Um, so maybe we, I don't know if the board would see the, see this again for a change in use, but maybe putting it into the, the conditions along with some of those other ones would be, would be useful.
Um, that was my concern with the, the number of people, the per hour, so.
Mr. Chairman, with regards to that, I think Amy goes last month, or it could have been Mark made it to me clear that it would require, this is a permit, special use to zoning board for medical marijuana, that any change to that use, be it recreational or otherwise, if that was permitted by the state of Rhode Island, would require action to and approval from the town. So this is as since for a medical marijuana dispensary, and that is all. Other than that would negate this approval.
That's correct.
Okay. Are you, Jamie, you comfortable you have everything that we wanted in this motion that was discussed?
Yeah, so there are three new findings and there are. I'm just going to number those again on.
A through K.
So I'm just going to summarize. So the, the finding, new findings were that the facility is designed to service X number of communities. The center is subject multiple commercial uses. There are shifts in increased traffic due to seasonal flows. Then with regards to the conditions to be added to the ones in the draft motion are architecture, the handicap spaces, the possibility of relocating them, uniformed officers. The fourth added would be hours of operation. The fifth would be a plan for pedestrian movements. And six, adding language from the TRC regarding the possibility of a relook with regards to the traffic. That language, Jay Parker read to the board this evening.
And the language about the potential for the lines in the parking lot that shall be managed by the applicant or so, something stating that there will not be lines in the parking lot.
Yeah, that, that, there would be, the applicant shall provide a pedestrian stacking plan and provide measures to prevent additional stacking for individuals.
So we'd have conditions of approval one through thirteen, is that correct?
You had one through seven and you were adding five.
I thought you said it was six.
All right, sorry, six.
I have six.
Incorrected, again.
Okay. All right, so and then the findings of fact were A through K.
I have three.
There are three added to J.
Oh, three, okay.
So the J. A, M, so it will be M.
Okay. All right, Maria, you comfortable with making that motion as amended tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Jay.
Uh, I just want to clarify with Mr. Rabbit. On the project summary, the findings of fact are A through H. And we're adding three more, is that correct?
Oh, sorry, Jay. I, I was reading I and J. So F, A, FGH are in the draft. And we would be adding three additional Roman numerals to that beyond H.
There are also, there are also I and J for.
I and J waivers.
But in the findings, it's now A through K, correct? Yeah, the first set of findings.
Yes.
And just so I'm also clear on the conditions of approval, the staff memo has one through seven with eight being the extra. Any other conditions deemed necessary by the planning board? Number eight would be replaced with. How many additional?
Six.
Six additional, so that'll be one through thirteen?
Yes.
Okay.
And do we, we, we have to change the findings of facts waivers requested? Will we have to change those letters? We had I, you had I and J in there.
American order would be adjusted, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. If you've got, got all those changes, Maria.
Uh, yeah, now I've written all over my page, but I will try to read this regardless.
I and J become L and M, and those, that's the ruling on the waiver.
Okay.
Okay, the following motion with associated findings and conditions of approval is being offered for consideration by the planning board during and should be amended accordingly. Oh, this is irrelevant, sorry. The South Kingston Planning Board hereby grants advisory development plan approval for the Winding Road Compassion Center, Inc. application of proposed medical marijuana compassion center with associated parking and landscaping improvements on assessors plat fifty-seven dash one, lot ninety-six, located at six eight two Kingston Road. The Winding Road Compassion Center, Inc. applicant Scott V. Hallberg, owner, development plan approval for the Winding Road Compassion Center, Inc. application is based upon plans entitled The Winding Road Compassion Center, six eight two Kingston Road, unit number one, South Kingston, Rhode Island, AP fifty-seven dash one, lot ninety-six dash zero, seats C one point zero, C two point zero, and L one point zero dated October twenty twenty with revisions through November nine twenty twenty completed by Joe Caselli Engineering, Inc., three hundred Post Road, Warwick, Rhode Island, oh two eight eight eight. Um, just wanted to check the revisions, are those through November or is there a different date, Mr. Caselli?
Uh, I.
Go ahead, Jay.
Mr. Chairman, Jay Parker, those dates are incorrect. If you like, staff can change those when we write up the motion for the decision for signature or if you'd like, we can change them now. The plan, the current plan is.
January eighth.
Uh, has revisions through January eighth, two thousand twenty-one.
And I'll state January twenty twenty-one for the record.
Thank you.
Uh, and findings of fact as amended, A through A.
Correct.
Yes.
Um, and in addition to development plan review standards listed above, the planning board further finds that, and those are L. L and M.
L and M.
L and M. In doing so, the planning board finds that the waivers or modifications are reasonable and within the general purpose and intent of these regulations and that literal enforcement of the regulations is impracticable and will exact undue hardship because of peculiar conditions pertaining to the land in question or waiver or modification of the regulations is in the best interest of good planning practice or design as evidenced by consistency with the comprehensive community plan, the zoning ordinance. And then we have conditions of approval, which are now one through. And then we have conditions of approval, which are now one through thirteen.
Okay, we have a motion by Maria as amended this evening. Uh, do we have a second?
Oh, a second, that's deep.
Okay, was that Joe? Sorry, there's a lot of hands and a lot of faces I'm looking for. Okay, we have a motion by Maria. We have a second by Joe. Uh, any further discussion on this motion? And I'll take a roll, uh, call vote from him, please.
Uh, Susan Axelrod.
She raised her hand, Pam.
Okay, thank you. Peter Di Stefano. Paul Jordan.
Hi.
Steve Demossi.
Hi.
Maria Mack.
Hi.
Joe Murphy.
Hi.
And Pam Rubenoff, hi.
All right, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you for the, everyone's effort to get this done tonight.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman and members of the board for your time and your approval. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Evening.
All right, good night, everyone. All right, so. Planning board that still remains here. What do we have? Any recommendations to counsel to be forwarded?
Thank you, Christine.
Reports. Reports of special items. Uh, do we need anybody for TRC? Jay?
Yes, we do, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a date on that?
Yes, that's going to be Wednesday, February tenth.
We have a volunteer. Everybody, all of a sudden. We had a stare down, okay. Thank you, Joe. And Joe, uh, just so Jay is clear. Do you want that at nine o'clock or do you want it at one o'clock?
I think I, you prefer nine o'clock, right? I know it's our choice, but Jay, nine o'clock's good for the staff.
That's fine.
Nine o'clock.
Okay.
And that was February tenth, is that what you said?
Yes, Wednesday, February tenth.
Okay, great.
All right. And the only other item, Jamie, we have a meeting next week with the council.
You do, uh, February third, which is Wednesday scheduled with a joint meeting, town council.
Okay, was there any uh? Any dialogue or any information that will be forwarded prior to that meeting or is it just a open discussion?
It, discussion, I want to say four primary topics of cottage regulations. Bear with me. Cottage regs. Accessory dwelling units. Uh, comprehensive community plan. And status of the Horseyly Witten contract in, in essence, moving forward with the missing metal.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, just as far as the cottage, I'm guessing everybody's had a chance to look at the map that uh. Jay sent out um, with zoning and futures on a future.
So, so a feasibility.
Yeah. I think we had some homework to do before the next meeting, right?
Yeah, I think that was, it'll just probably, it sounds like it's going to be an update and a, maybe a discussion with the council on where we're going with that.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is with council, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I just, I.
Yeah.
I just wondered what the context of the meeting was. It wasn't really clear what they. To me, what they were looking for or. The, the nature of the meeting. So we'll be getting something from the staff.
And it's a joint work session, correct, with the town council and the Affordable Housing Collaborative or is it just the town council?
No, I think the Affordable Housing is included as well.
Yeah, all three. So again, every third, next Wednesday with council and Affordable Housing Collaborative and then the following week, we have a work session.
Okay.
And I just wanted to reiterate the um, the conversation that we had um, at our last. Meeting about having a conversation relative to Amy's or Peter's. Memo about master plan and preliminary and our obligations and authority.
Um, I don't know if this is the right time to throw this in. At some point. Conversation about the. Open space requirements for subdivisions and how that open space. Gets enacted. I, I notice um, we're not as bad as some of our neighbors in that regard, but the sort of skeleton key. Open space that results a lot of times, I'm not sure is terribly beneficial. It may look nice, but as far as wildlife habitat, environmental issues, it's not, it doesn't do a lot. I don't know if there's a better way to do it. I think you probably have all hashed this around before and. If you want to tell me to go away, I'll shut up.
Well, questions always lead to new answers sometimes, so. You get it, you take another look at it, you get a different perspective. Obviously, over time. We've seen what, what works and what didn't work and.
I guess I'm just thinking that a, a, a single block of open space is always going to be more beneficial. Than the sort of little slivers that you get winding around between, between homes in a subdivision. But again, I, 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 you know, I don't know enough to say that one.
I think back in the eighties and the nineties when a lot of the subdivisions along South Road were created. Um, they were, it was open space, but they were really buffers as well.
Right.
To the surrounding neighborhoods. Um, but to your point that if it had been one large space, perhaps it would have been. More environmentally favorable to wildlife and, and whatnot, but.
I, I think it's a really good point because we tend to be introspective when we look at individual um, parcels or projects and looking at connections and looking at. There used to be a greenways plan way back when and um, looking at contiguous um, land uses so that it is meaningful. I think that's really relevant.
Yeah, yeah, we used to try to connect to the bike paths and. And try to match them up to, to maximize the benefit of those open spaces. But it's probably certainly something we probably need to look at again. But especially where we're getting more constraint and when we're trying to add more units, these bonus units. It's, it's putting a lot of pressure on good design.
It is.
So.
The open space attached to this project on Holly Road, it's. You know, is it long?
It, maybe it might have placed, but I do have a question now that uh, Amy's not here. I don't know how far she would let you go. What agenda item you're now discussing and it'll be scheduled for another time where it's referenced on the uh.
Yeah, future work.
Duly noted. Duly noted. Okay, so staff has that, those comments to think about for future works. So having said that and been shut down by a lawyer.
I'm not shutting you down.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just, just for clarity, you were discussing that under agenda item H, reports and special items.
That's probably correct.
Yeah, okay.
So I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Maria, second by.
Paul.
By Paul, okay, all in favor, raise your hand. It's unanimous. We'll see you next week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. You're a very good board, as is your zoning board too. I've always enjoyed working. Years with Ernie.
Oh, yeah.